You know, you know what, I'm gonna do that. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. Dr. Ron will run down the aisle, as will Councilmember Mary Ann Edwards. Now you see, he's slowing down on purpose. They're coming. Good evening, everybody. Councilmember Ron, welcome. Councilmember Edwards, glad to have you here tonight.
Glad I could join you.
Yeah, I know, I know. We're one big happy family. Oh, is it okay? Sounds good. Alrighty. Well, we called the meeting to order. I think it's appropriate, we recognize our prelude music by Josh Bondock. Josh, stand up, buddy. Great job, of course. Just about every council meeting, you're accompanied, or our performers are accompanied by the lovely Susan Miyamoto. Susan, stand up real quick. Today, we're gonna start our meeting, as appropriate, with an invocation by Pastor Anthony Albiziu of Calvary Chapel Bible Fellowship. Pastor, are you here? Come on up to the podium. And then I'm gonna ask you to remain standing, because Mayor Protem Stewart's going to give the flag salute. Please stand. If you can step up to the microphone there. Sorry to interrupt, God.
It's okay. Yeah, let's bow our heads. Father God, we come before you, Lord Jesus, and first, we want to acknowledge you, Lord, that you are on the throne, Lord. Father, we thank you, Lord, that you are, you know the beginning from the end, Lord. And you hold all things together, Lord Jesus. We thank you, Father, for sending your son to die on the cross for our sins, Lord. Father, bringing reconciliation with humanity back to yourself, Lord. We glorify you, Father. We praise you for the works that you've done, and that you continue to do, Lord. Lord, I lift up these councilmen, Lord, the mayor, the mayor pro tem, Lord. Father, lift up their families as well, Lord. Father, you give them wisdom, Lord, you give them discernment, Father. For we understand, God, that you have placed all authorities by your sovereign will and your sovereign judgment. You guide them. You give them your words, Lord. And you speak to them, Father, the way you speak to us, Lord. Father, as we come together, Lord, in whatever agenda that they may have, Lord, that you allow us to be quick to hear, slow to speak, and slow to anger. Being patient for you, Lord Jesus. Again, we thank you so much, Father, for your goodness and your patience. And I pray all this in your mighty name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Everybody, please join me in saluting our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you all. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, I'm most blessed to be able to sit on this dais with some colleagues of mine. Could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Edwards?
I'm here, and Dr. Haynes, please don't go.
Councilmember Ron?
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Schwank?
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Nigard?
I am here. It's the time of our meeting where we do presentations and proclamations. Is Eric Lundquist and Dan Turner here? Gentlemen, are you here? Come on down, please. Mayor Protem Stewart is gonna read a proclamation, and then perhaps we can talk about it a little bit more. Mayor Protem?
So, basically, the proclamation says the same for both, so I'm just gonna read it once. The city of Temecula would like to recognize Dan Turner and Eric Lundquist for their efforts in assisting as a first responder during a public emergency at Old Town Community Theater. Mr. Turner and Mr. Lundquist responded to a situation without delay, rendering aid to a patron who was suffering from a medical emergency. We are proud of Dan and Eric for their selfless acts of heroism, and we are honored to have them as members of our community.
Gentlemen, would you kindly just tell us what happened? And don't be shy. I know you may faint away from the attention, but I think the community needs to know. Tell us what happened that day.
So, first of all, I'm just gonna preface this by the fact that he is a very fortunate and heaven-watched-over man. Because had this happened at his home, had this happened actually during the actual play, no one may have even noticed what had happened until it was too late. It was very fortunate, it happened right at the end of intermission. People were coming in, so we were gathering back into the theater, and his wife had tried to interact with him, and he was not responding to her. So she immediately was alarmed and started calling for help. They asked if there was a doctor in the house, if there were other people that could come and help. And so I went down, I responded to that call, and we start, we realized that he was non-responding. Initially, he was breathing, but then shortly became unconscious. So we laid him down, and I ended up starting to do CPR on him. I think that's about when Dan came down, we had started doing CPR on him. And we were there, what, probably five, 10 minutes doing?
Probably at least 10 minutes.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I mean, the paramedics arrived fairly quickly. But it was a little, it was a little bit awkward. He was on the front row, which was another thing that actually, I think, helped. But we were able to get him on the ground between the stage and the front row, and we were able to do the CPR. And then he started to come to, right as the paramedics got there, and they were able to then kind of take over. But he, we, one of the, they had one of those AEDs there, so that we were able to get that involved, put that on his chest, look at his heart rhythm, identify. We shocked him three times, I think it was. And he started to respond shortly after the third shock. And so it was, it was an amazing thing to be a part of. You never expect to be called on to perform that way. But I was, I was glad that Dan, and there were some other individuals there, were there to help. And we had, I mean, couldn't have asked for a better team to have what happened happen, so.
Well, on behalf of the citizens of Temecula, I want to thank you for, number one, in your profession, not panicking. Number two, being willing to step out and assist your fellow man, and taking charge of that and saving somebody's life. It's no small thing. And I think both of you set a great example for others to follow. And that's why we wanted you here today. Not only to honor what you did, but everybody can see and follow your example as well. So thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Our next presentation for us here on the city council is a little bit, oh, excuse me. Our next presentation for us on the council is a little bit bittersweet. It's bitter because somebody we love and who has contributed to the city of Temecula in more ways than we can imagine, which we'll describe here in a second, is retiring. But it is sweet to see her, and it is sweet to reminisce over the beautiful work that we've done together. And I'm speaking of Dr. Karen Haynes, president of Cal State San Marcos. Dr. Haynes, would you come to the podium and bring your entourage with you? Is that, is that okay? You've brought, you've brought many people here, and I think they need to stand with you. We're gonna wanna take photos anyway, so you might as well bring them here. I'm gonna read a proclamation, but I don't know if the proclamation's gonna do it justice. And I probably believe councilmembers are gonna have something to say. I'm borrowing Ms. Edwards' glasses, so bear with me, because I left mine. Oh my gosh.
I told you they were strong.
Okay.
Mine are weaker, if you want it.
Oh, yeah, let me go with Mr. Stewart. You're a little more fashionable.
Okay.
All right. Oh, yeah. That's okay, thank you, yes, okay. All right. City of Temecula Certificate of Recognition. Presented on behalf of the city council to the, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of the city of Temecula, to Dr. Karen Haynes. The city of Temecula is proud to recognize Dr. Karen Haynes on her retirement. Dr. Haynes began her tenure in 2004 as the third and longest-serving president of California State University San Marcos. In 2016, Dr. Haynes became the first woman to serve as senior president in the 23-campus California State University system. She served as a university president for 23 years and academic administrator for over 30 years. Dr. Haynes led CSUSM with an eye towards social transformation through access and education, increasing the educational attainment rate of students, developing pertinent degree programs, and engaging the community in meaningful ways. Dr. Haynes oversaw vast growth at CSUSM, including the construction of 10 new facilities, the addition of a Temecula campus, and the doubling of new academic programs and career certificates. Dr. Haynes served as chair of the CSU program for education and research in biotechnology, chair of the CSU Commission on the Extended University, founding president of Women in Higher Education, and board member for the San Diego Regional Economic Development Corporation. She also received several awards and honors, including the 2017 Social Work Pioneer Award by the National Association of Social Workers, the 2015 Woman of the Year Award from San Diego Magazine, the 2015 President of the Year Award from California State Student Association, and the Cool Woman Award of 2015 from the San Diego Girl Scouts. Dr. Haynes was named as the third most influential social worker in the United States in 2014 by Social Work Degree Guide, and a power broker in 2015 by San Diego Business Journal. We congratulate Dr. Haynes on her retirement and thank her for the lasting and positive impact she made on the community. Okay, so we can dispense with the formal proclamation. That is done. In a minute, the city council's gonna join you down at the podium, okay? But I wanna set the stage. Circa 12 years ago, maybe it was 13, that city council at the time wanted to work on higher education in Temecula. We wanted to bring educational opportunities here. And so we tried all kinds of ways, meeting with Mount San Yuceno College, other universities, there was even a college campus planned on the other side of town, where the city had some property. And then we got the notion in our head that we wanted to become a Cal State. Why not? We're Temecula, there's really nothing we can't do. And ladies and gentlemen, that's how, if you saw my state-of-the-city address, we just thought of ourselves first class all the way. That's just how we thought of ourselves. So we set out to become the 24th Cal State University. So who do we go to for advice with Dr. Haynes and California State San Marcos? Tell us what we need to do. And one of the first things Dr. Haynes tells us is, "You're not gonna be the next Cal State University. That's just not gonna happen." But, okay, we can work with you to extend Cal State San Marcos to Temecula. And from there on, higher education has grown, has proliferated, and found root in Temecula, to the point where students are now attending school here at Cal State. Cal State opportunities are expanding. Partnership now with Mount San Yuceno is expanding. Mount San Yuceno realizing the potential for a partnership has now bought the old Abbott campus next to the mall. And now it's a bona fide legitimate campus for hired education. And it all came about with an idea and a brainstorm. My last comment is, when I look at you, Dr. Haynes, I see a Margaret Thatcher. That's what I truly do. You are a lady who never needed to be asked twice, who never held back her words, who gave us direction, in which we followed, and who always did what she promised. And that was very refreshing to us. And as I said in the back room, tens of thousands, and dare say hundreds of thousands of students in the future will have and will benefit from the work that you have done personally and the partnership that you've created with the city of Temecula. And I can't thank you enough on behalf of the citizens.
That was very nice.
I'm gonna turn the microphone over to you, and then I'm gonna turn it back over to my colleagues. How about that? Then we're gonna come down and take some pictures.
Works for me.
All right.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, City Council of Temecula, for this recognition and this honor. And Mike speaks the truth about that very first meeting, maybe 13 years ago. And it seems to be no accident that the city of Temecula and Cal State San Marcos were birthed, both birthed, in 1989. Because we seem, all these years later, to be connected to the same drive, providing access and opportunity to make our communities higher quality, places where people want to live, to work, to stay, to thrive. So when some of you, and I'm looking now at Mary Ann and Mike and Aaron, Chuck Washington was there in the moment.
Jeff Comicero.
Right, Jeff Comicero. They came with a very clear purpose. They came wanting to be a higher education presence for Southwest Riverside, which is part of our service region. They came determined. And I did say, probably not today, the 24th CSU, but we can make it work. And since that first meeting, it has been my pleasure and my privilege and my surprise that they, you, have exceeded our expectations. We, a campus who see ourselves as creative, innovative, get-to-yet people, and you always got to yes. You were always creative and innovative, and you always also spoke truth to us about what you could do. I don't know that I could have imagined, from that first meeting, or that first site, which Paul and Diane Garrett helped us create, for what we would become today. But I know and believe what we might become in the future. Because it was the vision, and it was the partnership. And I thank you for bringing these people behind me. Because it also was some of these people behind me, and will be these people with you, who will continue to create this partnership. I said then, I believe, and I think it truer now, that these are the collaborations and the partnerships that will build public higher education in the future. Maybe toward a full campus, but always toward the greater good of a region that we collectively serve, that we care about, and we commit to. I don't know that I have ever been more pleased to think that this is one part of what I will believe is my legacy, is that we have come together with energy, with enthusiasm, with goodwill, and created something from nothing, and created something that will benefit, has already benefited, and will benefit this community long range. It is what, the best of what public higher education should be. And I think it is the best of what public government should be, to find those paths forward, to collaborate, to create, to believe, to vision, and to be equal partners. So thank you for the recognition. It has been my pleasure and my honor to do that with all of you. Thank you.
My colleagues. Dr. Ron, anything?
Always. So, you know, it had 20-some-odd years I've been working with universities. You're the sixth, seventh campus I've had the opportunity to interact with, and the eighth president. And I can say unequivocally and unapologetically, you're the best. Absolutely. You know, it was part of your attitude that became pervasive in the Cal State San Marcos campus. And while I was at SDSU, I saw that happen. And was a little jealous, to be, to be honest. You guys had something very different and very unique. And knew that, you know, I wanted to be a part of that. And, you know, I have to say that that attitude, that spirit, that leadership is gonna be deeply missed. Your institutional knowledge is remarkable. And, you know, I feel sorry for anybody who has to step into those shoes, but you couldn't have put them in a better place. The careful guiding hand that you've provided, not just to the main campus, but here as well, is just, it's fundamentally changed everything. And I remember meeting with you, the first time we even proposed the idea of having a larger footprint here in Temecula, and talked about the Abbott facilities. And we took that first tour sort of hesitantly, because it was a big leap, and there was a lot of unknown. And you brought that same attitude to the table, where, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't that big a deal. And I think it reassured all of us to be able to see the same vision and be able to work to try and bring all those pieces together. And so what you've created here for our city is, you know, it's gonna forever change our community for the better. It's been an absolute honor working with you and being able to support the campus and develop programs. And hope that in retirement, you guys are gonna be able to quietly kick back and relax a little bit, and enjoy it, and be able to watch. Because you are certainly the best example of how a university should be run. And can't, can't thank you enough for everything you've done for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Dr. Ron. Mayor Protem Stewart?
Yeah, well, I've known Dr. Haynes for a whole 30 minutes now. And she's been a joy to talk to, and I wish I'd known you longer, but you seem like a lovely lady, so.
Councilmember Schwank?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say thank you, really on behalf of the community. I know my, I just texted my wife, and I go, "What year did you graduate from Cal State San Marcos again?" "94." So she's one of those first classes. And I think the work that you've done here in Temecula and then at the main campus is just, it gives so much opportunity for our youth to graduate from those campuses. So I know, just thank you on behalf of those kids that have that opportunity. And some of the kids here that can stay close to home and go to school right in their own backyard. I really appreciate the work you've done. And I know you have that legacy that is just, it's just gonna be amazing. Cal State San Marcos is just, is on a very strong path, thanks to you. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Well, I hardly know where to start, but, you know, can you have a soulmate, I think, as a friend? I guess maybe BFF would be the best description. When you look at someone and want to emulate them, because they set such a fantastic example for you, and literally everything that she does, and the way that she leads. You know, who was it that said, "It's like the iron fist in the velvet glove"? And I can tell you truthfully, I had the honor of being able to serve on the foundation board for, I don't know, how many years? 10 years, 11 years, maybe? And so we got to know Karen and Jim fairly well. And they are as real 10 years later as they were in the first 30 minutes. And what you get is the real deal. And I think that's what makes it so wonderful to work with Cal State San Marcos. When you can be a strong leader like that, and you infuse your positive attitude into the lives and the culture of a campus. And I think every university president does that, to the detriment or the benefit of the campus. And in this case, in those years that I was able to serve on the board, I literally saw the campus change physically and grow unbelievably quickly and successfully. But I saw the culture of the campus change. And over those years, Cal State San Marcos became well-known, and I would say throughout the world, the first university to have the most first-time college students, first in their family, the most veterans, opening a Veterans Center. What I say about the ACES program, serving foster youth, the most, highest number of foster youth. And I could go on and on about all the things that Cal State San Marcos did that were number one. And it's because of the person that served in the number-one position. And she has fantastic talent, you know, wind beneath her wings. You cannot lead if you don't have a wonderful team behind you. And again, infusing everyone with that positive can-do spirit, it really is very much like living in Temecula and the way that the city of Temecula operates. I always said in the early days, "I'm too dumb to know what I can't do." And sometimes that's a benefit, because I think that makes you thoughtfully take risks that you might not otherwise take. And it causes you to bring people around you that are gonna hold you up and make sure that you are successful, because what you want is for the good of so many, not just yourself. It's for the good of the students, the good of the community. And you truly have led, in the present, with an eye to the future. So, you know, I've said many times, I wouldn't wanna be the person that comes behind Dr. Haynes. But you have left such a fantastic foundation. And the university is nowhere near finished in any sense of the word. There's always a new victory around the corner. There are people waiting to sponsor new programs, new facilities. And if any of you, I encourage you, if you have not been to Cal State San Marcos, and if you, especially if you haven't been there in the last five, six years, you need to go. Because under this woman's leadership, that university was transformed in every sense of the word. And to bring that to Temecula is, you know, more than we could ever hope for, and to say how much we appreciate everything you've done. Because that aspect of our community has been transformed as well. And as an employee of Temecula Valley Unified School District, it's not just the community college that you partner with, it's not just Cal State San Marcos campus. It is with every student in every high school that graduates. Because you address them with open arms, you welcome students from every, every possible aspect, socioeconomic, you know, part of every society and city and arena, and even foreign countries. I can't say enough, but you've made such a difference in my life by being a friend and a fantastic mentor. And you're not gonna be very far, I'll tell you that right now. So we're staying in touch. And there is a book in your future, there has to be a book in your future. And so for Team and for First Gentleman Jim Mickelson, who actually ran the ACES program, these people have a heart for social work, social services. And that also shows in everything that the campus does. Cal State San Marcos is a very, very fortunate and truly blessed university. And it's because of your leadership and the heart that you have, not for just education, but for people. So you know I love you both. And I voted no 75 times on your retirement, and it didn't do any good. So we're gonna have to find other ways to get together and, you know, share stories. But I love you both, thank you for everything you've done.
So I'm gonna have this amended to refer to you as the iron fist in the velvet glove. And of course, I'm kidding, but let's, the whole city council would like to join you down below for some photographs. If everybody can just line up here in front of the dais.
Iron fist in the velvet glove. I like that.
I like that.
Yeah.
I am here. Can I push? Beautiful. I know.
Really, folks, it's hard to sum up the accomplishments in a 15-minute ceremony. Alrighty. Now's the time for public comments, Madam City Clerk. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do have public comments.
Then we got a video to roll. Let's do it.
Hey, Temecula. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item not listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
That was a great job. First speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Donna Kizlitis, to be followed by Kristi Nicheun.
Ms. Kizlitis, how do you say it? Kizlitis. Kizlitis. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. I just want to say, I love Temecula.
Thank you.
And I sincerely mean it, and I...
Can you pull that microphone up a little bit?
Sure. And I, I've lived in many different places and Temecula is beautiful. It, okay, but that's not why I'm here.
Keep going, keep going.
But I attended the state of the city address of Pachanga. And I was so impressed and so proud to be from the city. When I was there, I represent, I came there, we had a table, I represented the Tri-Counties International Dyslexia Association. I have been advocating and bringing awareness about dyslexia to our city for over, about a year and a half. And how it all started is, I became a non-related legal guardian to a student when he was 16 years old. And he had actually been with Project Touch here in Temecula, and I received foster care benefits for him. And I, he was only in eighth grade, and I realized he couldn't read. I went to IEP meetings and somebody said, "You need to hire an advocate." I thought, "I'm an administrator in another school district." And I thought, "Oh, advocates are only for people who cause problems." I was like, "I'm not doing it. I got one." It didn't work out. And I finally hired an awesome, awesome attorney, Wendy Hausman, who represents many special needs students here in Temecula. And I had to hire her because I didn't know how to navigate through a special ed or IEP process. And I spent my foster care money, about $10,000 on foster care, my, all my benefits towards Wendy, who I love and I support her. And District also spent, with their private law firm, San Diego Shareholder, another $10,000, at least $10,000. Then they used another attorney against me. But I fought, I fought. I have been to nine Temecula Valley School Board meetings and they've done nothing and, I mean, just fought me. And I go back and I fight. But it didn't turn out that great. In the fall, excuse me, February, the District sent me, and I was paying for private tutoring for dyslexia, too, for this student. And it was $6.50 a month for that. And I received a letter from the District and it says, "District is confused as to the effect you believe Barton Reading and Spelling would have for the student's educational benefit. Temecula doesn't believe that Barton Reading Program has or would have for the student. Students' diploma and adult transition program were designed and reasonably calculated for students to graduate with a high school diploma." What I learned through this entire process is that...
I'm going to interrupt you a quick second.
Yes.
Because you're out of time, but I'm going to give you just, sum up what you want to do in two sentences.
Okay, I love what you do for autism here, and I love what the city does here for special needs. I am asking for the support of the city so that all of our students can read, so that they graduate and they have a reading program for dyslexia, for dyslexia. Because what happens is that the student...
Got it, got it.
Yes.
Send me an email.
Okay, thank you.
You got it, alright? I'll be waiting for it.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kristi Nicheun, to be followed by Mike DeKalb.
Hi, Kristi, welcome tonight.
Hello. My name is Kristi Nicheun, and I work for Hospice of the Valleys. We're a nonprofit hospice that has been serving the community for the last 36 years. So two weeks ago, I had the pleasure of attending the state of the city. And I have to say, I love Temecula, too. As a resident that's lived here the past 17 years, I feel really blessed to be part of this community. And there were so many great nonprofits, from Michelle's Place to Project Touch to Hospice of the Valleys and so many others there that were in attendance. It was wonderful. Last year I was here, I had the opportunity to share some good news with you, and this year I get to repeat that good news. Hospice of the Valleys, for the second year in a row, achieved healthcare-first hospice elite status. Hospice of the Valleys was only one of two hospices in the whole state of California that achieved this. And how you achieve it is that Medicare surveys patients' families on the service that they received. To receive elite status, you must achieve above the national average for all 24 questions asked. We did that last year and we did that again this year. We're the only one in Southern California and one of only two in the state of California. So I really encourage people to go on Medicare hospice compare, just like you can compare a nursing home, you can compare hospices. So that you are making an informed decision when you're finding that care for your loved one. And I also really, really want to thank you, the city, for your continued support with grants and CDBG funding, because those monies allow us to have a patient-nurse ratio that allows us to deliver that care. So, thank you very much.
Kristi, thank you for coming. Go ahead and clap if you guys want to clap. And I said it last year, I'm going to say it again this year, Hospice of the Valleys has a rich and deep history here in Temecula, probably one of the first, if not the first, hospice services. I know many people who've availed themselves with Hospice of the Valley, my family as well. And I can tell you, you know, dealing with death is very difficult. Having people there to help you deal with death is so comforting. And the way you guys do it is amazing. So congratulations once again.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Mike DeKalb, to be followed by Kathy Sonner.
Mike, are you here? There you are.
Okay.
Pronounce it for us again.
Say again.
What, how does your name pronounce?
My name is pronounced DeCello.
DeCello.
Good Italian guy.
Okay, welcome.
I'm going to be referring to some of my notes just so I stay on point. First of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, everybody in attendance. Thank you for giving me a voice. I've been in Temecula for almost 10 years now. I love this city, very active in the community. And one of the things I want to talk about tonight is, in the past two years, I've seen a dramatic increase in a safety issue that's going on here in town in regards to traffic. And this is just, in the past, green means go, yellow means slow down, red means stop. That's not the case anymore. Yellow means floor it. Red means if I've got another two seconds, I can go through that light. Last summer, my 22-year-old daughter was hit by a woman that ran a red light, totaled her car, and thank God, she was okay. This is happening constantly. I have a dash cam, I catch this stuff all the time. I spoke with Chief McConnell earlier because my perception was that traffic enforcement was not as good as it could have been. And the information she gave me staggered me with what their numbers actually are, which was also very encouraging. But I also look at it and go, I see motor officers stationed at a brand-new stop sign in a residential area that's relatively low traffic, except for when the schools are coming in and going. And these officers are citing residents of that neighborhood for running or rolling a stop sign instead of standing at the corner of Margarita and 79 and just waiting for the people to block that intersection when that light goes red. So that's one of the concerns I have. And that's not even counting the people that brazenly run lights at high speed. I've seen several near misses myself. Furthermore, the instances of DUI appear to be going up at an alarming rate. Most recently, with the dramatic crash just outside this building last week. And that's a huge concern for me. And I feel that we're missing an opportunity here as far as, we are the wine capital of Southern California. We push that. We have Old Town, which is a plethora of bars and restaurants. We have Pachanga. All of these places serve a lot of alcohol, so there's a lot of drunks out there. While I'm not saying that we should take that away, I would like us to consider exploring the cannabis industry, which is a billion-dollar industry, which is being used to great effect in other cities for tax revenue. City of San Diego's taxing it 27%. That revenue could be used to bolster our police force, to add to the safety and traffic enforcement that we have out there right now, and could curb some of this stuff. We can't stop all the drunk people from driving. That's an impossible expectation. But we can look at other revenue strains and look at other solutions for this. This money could be used in Temecula and used where it's woefully needed, reduce DUI accidents and fatalities, to cut down and get the information out there to people on this aggressive driving. Again, I see this every day.
Mr. DeCello?
Yes, sir.
Your time's up, but if you would just maybe wait in the audience for a few minutes. Your comments are very timely. I believe Councilmember Swank is going to, is going to speak to them. He has a concern as well that he shared with me, and I think you'll be pleased with what he has to say.
I appreciate that, and thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kathy Sonner, to be followed by Bob Cowell.
Ms. Sonner, good evening to you.
Hello, thank you so much. This may seem a bit redundant. That is my husband right there. I've lived here since 2001. Don't like Temecula at all, that's why I've been here for 18 years. I'm joking. What I would like to talk, speak to, though, is my experience. I've lived in East Red Hawk for all 18 years. I drive down Temecula Parkway every single day. I have a dash cam as well. The epidemic that I see with this red light running is primarily with the turn lanes, right? So I stop at Pachanga Parkway, eastbound, and I'm stopped. And the oncoming traffic going westbound that's turning onto Pachanga Parkway, I will sit there, my light will turn green, and it's like, one, two, three, four, I'm not kidding you, six cars running that turn red light. Happens also at Margarita Road on the turn lanes, just tonight, coming here in the car. Three cars sitting in the middle of the intersection while we have a green light. We're like, gee, will we get to go during our green light? Because there's three cars waiting. So anyway, don't want to run out of time here. Bringing up that stop sign, that inconsequential stop sign, it was such a waste of money for the city and for Red Hawk. It's on channel, rolling stops in no traffic. Let's place our law enforcement at these intersections, please. Let's stop this constant epidemic of red light running instead of worrying about stop signs. Also, bringing up the whole option for the cannabis taxes, right? It's, we're not going to stop it by keeping it out of the city. San Diego's just right over the hill. People just go down, they get it there, they bring it up here. If there's a consequence from that, then, seconding what my husband said, use that tax benefit, that revenue, and do something really, really good with it to help improve our community. And we're not going to be able to stop the whole cannabis thing, it's going, I've heard it's even going to be federally approved next year. So I don't know if that's rumor or truth, but you can't really fight it, but we can utilize the tax revenue to make it a better community that will help protect all of us. We already support a drug, and it's called alcohol. And we support it, it's in our logo. Wine, Southern California's wine country. We're supporting a drug, it's just in a prettier package, right? Wine country. So that being said, there is a way that we can marry the two of them and create a better community for all of us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by Christine O'Neill.
Hello there, sir. And counsel. I wanted to weave in two different items, and one is your resolution you had on the Constitution and socialism with the Border Patrol Station and the immigration issue. One of the things that the Border Patrol Station is, whether they're let go here locally or not, is that there are people there that are from other countries, and they've come here for a reason. The reason is that their countries are dysfunctional. However, they're coming to a semi-functional state of California, which is turning more and more socialist as we continue on this road and down the bigger government path. The people they're bringing in, the socialists in this state wish to bring in, come from mainly three different countries. They're called triangle countries. They're Guatemala, Honduras, and El Salvador. Those three countries are the most, some of the most socialist countries in the Western Hemisphere. Guatemala, if you look online, is the most socialist country. There is not even a Communist Party there anymore. It's socialist. There's no jobs. The people that are coming here are sick, have no opportunities. And the socialists, the Democrats here, want to make this one more socialist country. There's nothing less freedom than taking away the ability of a person to find a job, to have the pursuit of happiness, to have liberty, to be able to do what they want, allowed what they want. And socialism takes that away by putting all that in the big hands of big government. I don't know if I have any more time on this issue, but I just want to encourage you to someday vote on that issue. I'm trying to find other state, it's not states, but cities that will grab onto this. Thank you.
Do you, Mr. Cowell?
The next speaker is Christine O'Neill, to be followed by Brian O'Neill.
Can I give my time to Bob?
No, we don't do that here.
Okay, well...
But, Ms. O'Neill, a pleasure to see you. It's been a very long time.
Remember the Liberty Quarry?
Yes, I do. Welcome.
Members of the council, Honorable Mayor, I'm here for you, Mr. Nigar. Somebody's got to say it. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your leadership in making our town safe and beautiful. We have lived here since 1989. We were a little bit scared of what would happen to our beautiful area with one McDonald's and one grocery store and horse ranches. You've done a magnificent job. It's safe and beautiful. I just want to say very quickly, I think we could make it even more beautiful if we put some attention on our on and off ramps, make them a little more attractive. I know you probably got plans in place for that. I'm very proud of our city, our law enforcement. Mr. Nigar has helped me with so many problems over the years, immediately. I don't think our citizens know how accessible and how excellent, especially Mr. Nigar, Mrs. Edwards, I've contacted her office, from anything from trees to shopping carts in a bad location. I wanted to mention one more thing. My husband and I are educators. We are zealously opposed to cannabis in this area. It is different than alcohol. It will get into the hands of our children. We see kids driving around in cars, we smell the smell. It's different than alcohol. It's a gateway drug. It's, it is more dangerous. We'll talk about that later. I'm here for you guys to thank you, especially our fabulous mayor. Please, keep doing what you're doing. You're the one person that cannot retire. Thank you.
Thank you. You're very kind, but I have, you are very kind, but I have to say, no one person, I couldn't do what I do if it wasn't for everybody else. But you're very kind in your comments.
Where's the one I've been talking to?
Well, I know, and, and just, you know what, going back, geez, almost 15 years. Remember, you had a complaint, we got in the truck and we drove around. So I remember that.
This man filled the pothole within 24 hours. My friend, who's also a teacher, she said, "What's going on?" I said, "He's the man." You are.
I would like to have seen that.
Yeah, that's what we did. And just quickly, on the cannabis issue, we've debated a bit back and forth. This council's already decided, and that issue kind of left the barn, but we'll continue to watch it. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Brian O'Neill, to be followed by our final speaker, Ira Robinson.
Mr. O'Neill, and greetings to you as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to be talking about education again because I myself have been an educator for about 30 years. I've been a resident here for about 30, 33 years, I believe 34 years. And I second what my wife said and what Bob said. I'm with them completely. I wrote what I wrote here sort of in a prayer because I am grateful to the city council for everything that has happened within the last several years that I have been aware who is responsible.
Thank you. You're, you're very kind, but I have, you are very kind, but I have to say, no one person, I couldn't do what I do if it wasn't for everybody else. But you're very kind in your comments. Well, I know, and, and just, you know what? Going back, geez, almost 15 years. Remember, you had a complaint, we got in the truck, and we drove around. So I, I remember that.
This man filled the pothole within 24 hours. My friend, who's also a teacher, she said, "What's going on?" I said, "He's the man." You are.
I would like to have seen that.
Yeah, that's what we did. And just quickly, on the cannabis issue, we've debated a bit back and forth. This council's already decided, and that issue kind of left the barn, but we'll continue to watch it. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Brian O'Neill, to be followed by our final speaker, Ira Robinson.
Mr. O'Neill, and greetings to you as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to be talking about education again, because I myself have been an educator for about 30 years, and a resident here for about 30, 33 years, I believe 34 years. And I second what my wife said and what Bob said. I'm with them completely. I wrote what I wrote here sort of in a prayer, because I am grateful to the city council for everything that has, has happened within the last several years, that I have been aware who is responsible for this great community, and particularly for our educational system. So I'm going to read this. "God, we pray for the protection of the minds and hearts of our schoolchildren and our youth." I, this is the only best way that I could have done this. "We pray for the turnaround of the educational systems in America and in the state of California. Protect our children from the bombardment of social media, from false ideologies of race and gender, identity politics, scientific humanism, and the lies of socialism, Marxism, in all its forms. We ask for the divine direction of our children and youth toward opportunity, toward individual development, excellence, and all freedoms as provided by the free enterprise system and by the Constitution. We ask for the reversal of the tide of all policies that replace parents' rights in education and homeschooling. Protect our free speech. Restore our school prayer. Restore the teachings of the traditional American moral values, the history of freedom in America, patriotism, and religious principles of our forefathers. And finally, we ask God unlock the best gifts of our schoolchildren and youth through a balanced education of the heart, the head, and the hand. And we thank you, and we ask the blessings to be upon all the people in the city council and the fine work that you've done. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, and thank you for that prayer. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, our final speaker is Ira Robinson.
What if we don't let you pass? I'm just messing with you, Ira, okay? Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Alrighty. Then we're going to move on to, let's see what we have, our city council reports. Mr. Stewart?
All right, so I have, I was gone for two weeks to Japan. We have a sister city in Japan, Dyson, Japan, and Mayor Hero sends his greetings and warm welcomes to the city of Temecula. You know, it, it's called a sister city program, but I felt like we were like a Big Brother city program, because everywhere we went, it was little touches of Temecula all over this little town called Dyson. And Dyson is basically a farming community of about 16,000 people. So it's, it's relatively small in comparison, but 25 years ago, when we became sister cities, we were literally only twice as big as Dyson was. But we've increased, and they've pretty much stayed the same. But they have, a lot of the stuff in Dyson is smaller versions of what we have in Temecula. They've literally been coming over here for 25 years, and they come, I think they come every year as, with an adult group, and every year with a middle school group. So they've created a lot of bonds and friendships with our local community. So, and I think we go, what, once every five years or so? I mean, we don't go as often as they come here. But, but they have a park called Temecula Hill. They have a community center that looks kind of like our rec center on, over there at Ronald Reagan. And so you just see little touches. And even when we were at these places, they were quick to tell me, "Oh yeah, we did this because we saw this in Temecula. Oh yeah, we did this because we saw this in Temecula." So I mean, as far as what impact does, does a sister city program have? I, I think in our case, our impact on them has been incredibly large. Their impact on us is kind of a different kind of impact, where we just have more of a relationship-building impact with the people of Dyson. So we always have an artist do like a, a painting for Dyson, and so the Dyson people did a little painting for us, and we actually got to meet the artist at a meet and greet that I went to. And it was, it was a very cool time. The cultural experience, I mean, I got to sleep on the floor of a 100-year-old Japanese house, which that's a unique experience in and of itself. And this, and this dress, I'm not trying to start a new fashion statement. This is just, they, my host family gave me this as a farewell gift.
Stand up.
Very nice. Yep, do the pivotal turn.
Right, right. So yeah, it was a great experience, and like I said, we, they come here, in fact, they're coming this summer with a group of middle schoolers. And I actually got to meet the middle schoolers at the middle school, and I guess Margarita Middle School, they're, they're sister city, they're sister schools. So, so yeah, it'll be cool to actually see them and, and talk to those kids again. But yeah, it was a great time. So, that's my story.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Oh, oh, yes. Bonnie back there was at the, she was on the trip with us, and I, I wish we had the video of me trying to eat this thing. It was a fish, but a full fish. I mean, it was like head, tail, everything.
Eyes.
Eyes, everything. And I got half of it down, but that was about all I could do. But yeah, they had squid, sea urchin. I'm not a sushi guy, so, and it's a lot of raw, a lot of very chewy things that, you know, texture-wise, it was...
I thought you looked a little thinner.
Yeah, well, yeah. So, yeah. Every McDonald's we passed by, I asked to stop, by the way. So I ate McDonald's three times while I was in Japan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Ron.
That's funny, Stu, I'm sorry. Just like the Temecula ambassador at McDonald's. That's the picture I had. Just wanted to update real quick. Mike, I don't know if you were going to cover this, but our, our meeting last week on transportation, we brought together the I-15 task force again and had an excellent conversation. You know, I think the, the, one of the best things I walked away with from that meeting, actually, two things. One was, it was the first meeting where all of the city jurisdictions, there were no arguments. You know? I had no, no arguments, no mudslinging, nothing. I mean, I think we've all finally come to terms with the fact that we have to work together to make something significant happen on the I-15 corridor, and we all see a mutual benefit in doing so. And I think we've, we've crossed a very significant threshold in our region for doing that. But the other one was, you know, most recently, you know, that decision with the RCTC to spend roughly, what, $32 million on environmental studies so that we can put asphalt in the middle of the freeway and that dirt and weeds? And I just have to say, I find it unconscionable that, that we'd even be considering spending $32 million on the asphalt paving over weeds. I kind of feel like we could just do it. And so, and this coming from the guy who runs, you know, environmental education programs, right? It, it, it's just stunning to me how encumbered these programs and projects have become in California. And, and, you know, I, I think we started a conversation at that meeting that I hope continues, saying, you know, "Let's make sure we do the right thing with our taxpayer dollars, with our transportation funds, and, and be a little bit more pragmatic and, and realistic with how we, how we deal with transportation planning." And so I know we've started a conversation there that I hope continues and moves things in a, in a, in a proper direction. So, that's it.
Thank you.
I do have one thing.
Councilmember Edwards.
I do have one thing, and that was, I think it was Kristi, asked about beautification of our on and off ramps, and yes, there are plans in place, and they're going to be awesome. So as Dr. Ron said, anytime you plan anything that's going to make a change to the environment or even in the middle of a freeway, you have to jump through all kinds of hoops. But yes, there are things planned for our off ramps, and they're going to be great. And so, Mr. City Manager, are you going to talk about culinary? Okay, then I don't need to.
Thank you. Councilmember Swank.
Mr. Mayor, if it'd be okay, our city manager wanted to jump in ahead of me, if that's okay with you?
Certainly, of course. Prime Minister Adams, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I have a slide that, that I'll put up, and, you know, there was a four-day stretch last week that was absolutely one of the darkest hours for, for our city and, and for the subregion in terms of horrific accidents that occurred. And I just want to acknowledge the Marietta woman, Janet Jeneo, who lost her life on the I-15 southbound. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the 15-year-old Marietta teen, Lily Kelly Harrison, who lost her life on Ranch California Road in the Dulles area. These photos here, I have a short email, Mr. Mayor, that I'd just like to read, and, and there's a point to, to me sharing this, is that building that you see there is the side of City Hall, specifically the struck, structured parking garage there. And the gentleman that was driving that car was part of the six-car pilot that occurred on Tuesday morning, and he survived this, this horrific incident. But there were city employees that were touched and that were involved in this incident, and I, I thank you for letting me share this. And I just wanted to read this email that came to me. And it says, "Aaron, now that things have calmed down a bit, I wanted to let you know how amazing our building inspectors, Carlos Torada and Jesse LaRue, and code enforcement officer Maria Romine, were the morning of the accident on the I-15 freeway. Maria was sitting at her desk, first to see a dust cloud and cargo flying by her window. She heard a crash and called 911. After hearing the crash, Carlos and Jesse ran out the back door and saw a car sitting on the street at the backside of our parking structure, completely damaged, facing the opposite direction of traffic with no driver. They climbed up in the structure to see if the driver had been ejected, but realized he was actually stuck in the crushed car and going in and out of consciousness. The driver was terribly injured and begging for help to be pulled out. But the inspectors understandably didn't want to exacerbate any injuries, so they did not touch him. By then, Brian Clements, our building official, was summoned to help supervise the scene, and Zach Refield in fire prevention had been called outside to assist. Zach knew exactly what to do and took control of the situation. He kept his composure, he kept the victim as calm as he could. He directed Jesse to go to one end of the building to make sure the fire truck and ambulance could find them in the back of the building. It seemed like a lifetime before they actually arrived, but no one knew the extent of the damage up on the freeway, so we thought all the help was up there. During the commotion, a search and rescue team was on their way to San Diego and saw what happened, and a few of them literally hopped down from the freeway to assist, too. They helped pull the driver out of the car, and then all they could do was wait. When everyone returned to their desk, I observed Zach going around asking if he could do anything for anyone and being very attentive to those of us who witnessed the accident and saw the victim firsthand. I was touched by his selflessness. He was very kind and very caring. Carlos, Jesse, Maria, Brian, and Zach are exceptional coworkers, city coworkers, and should be praised for their quick response to the scene. They all kept their composure and even completed a full day's work after such a traumatic experience. Now that's dedication, and I'm glad they're on our team. Thanks for listening, and this was Kim Codani that provided me that." So I just wanted to recognize specifically those employees that were touched and involved by, by this horrific incident. So we can give them a round of applause.
Anything further, Mr. City Manager? Councilmember Swank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To say that our community has been rocked by the, the recent events is, is a serious understatement. Mayor Mike, you know, I, I sent you an email a while back and sort of talked about just traffic collisions, traffic violence in general, and, and the rise, and what we perceive as a rise in this, and whatnot. You know, we have children that we send to school, they walk to school, they bike to school, they drive. My, my wife drives to school every day, and we have those same anecdotal stories of the left turns and the, you know, the sort of insanity that you would see on a somewhat daily basis. You know, I think it's time that we have a serious conversation about what we can do about this. What do we want our community to be like down the road? You know, everyone mentions Wine Country and, and drinking and whatnot, but, you know, that's a separate issue. But I think it's one we can tackle together. I think we can look at that. We can look at the facts. I want to know data from police and fire. I want to know what's going on, on our streets. The, the stories are compelling, but what is actually happening out there? And, and then, again, what can we do about it? You know, if it's reaching out to stakeholders in the community and coming together as a community. We all have to live here, right? Like, we all have to get to work, we all have to get to somewhere, but we all want to do that safely. And, and I would make the case that one traffic fatality is one too many. Zero should be the number we're looking for. Zero deaths on our streets is what it should be. No one should have to deal with what happened over the last little bit. You know, when I see 15-year-old children being killed on our streets, I struggle with that as a parent, and then I struggle with that as an elected leader. And I feel like the, the time is ripe for us to have a serious conversation. So if my council colleagues would, would indulge me, I would certainly like to have that conversation and see where it takes us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Swank, and I applaud you for taking the lead on this issue. Mr. City Manager, it's my understanding you're going to get together with Councilmember Swank. I think I'm going to participate in it as well. And then, if that's how you'd like to handle it, then we can report out back to the council in whatever fashion. Councilmember Swank, does that work?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, very good. And thank you very much. Okay, I just have a couple of issues. If you can put the State of the City slide up real quick. I, I was privileged and honored, in so many different ways I can't even describe, to be able to not only serve as mayor, but to give the State of the City address. It's going to be on our public channel, and I'm not certain, do we have the times that's going up there, Mr. City Manager?
I don't, but it'll be advertised on the city's homepage shortly.
Okay, very good. And I, why I, I would suggest citizens watch it if you weren't able to attend, is there's a lot of cool information in there, such as it was mentioned about beautifying the medians, that's in there. It's mentioned about law enforcement and cannabis, that's in there. We covered a whole lot of things in that State of the City. Is the video up on the website, or are we just waiting for it to, to go out on social media?
I believe they're finalizing, "Are we up? We're up," he says. So it should be available to anyone that wants to watch from beginning to end on, on the city's homepage.
And, and you know, it was very interesting, we had Cody Lee perform. I don't think there's anybody in the United States and perhaps around the world who doesn't know who Cody Lee is now. But it was sort of fortuitous, we did not know this, when we asked Cody to perform at our State of the City back in January, actually, I asked him to perform two years ago, that two days before, the taping of America's Got Talent would premiere, and he wins the golden buzzer. So he was, he, you know, he performed, and it was just very fortuitous. We had to edit that out. He's in there, but we edited the performance out because he's still on America's Got Talent, and they won't let him perform live. So he's in there, but his performances will be put back in later. We did a number of videos in there, and, and all of the videos will be used for economic development and to promote Temecula. We're going to, at the next few council members, begin to show those videos because they're just very well done. So tonight, right now, we got a quick three-minute video. Please enjoy it.
Welcome to Temecula, a city built on love, a city full of love.
Hi, ladies.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday!
So much love. Some say it's contagious.
Love you!
Hey, how are you?
Temecula may be turning 30, but its spirit is much older, and love for each other and for the community is boundless. Continuously growing, all while never losing touch of what it's always been. From restored or new buildings to the bank that's been a staple in the community since 1914.
Hi, Mayor Mike!
Hey, Zacharoo!
Love the city!
I love you!
Hey, Mayor!
Hey, Adam! Wow, look at that car!
Who was that, Mayor?
He was at Temecula City Hall earlier, talking about opening up a brand-new Lexus dealership in Temecula.
Man, that's fantastic!
I bet you he'd love a Love Temecula license plate frame on that puppy.
You got to get him one of those.
I'm on it.
All right. Good seeing you, Mayor!
Good seeing you, too! Tell the family I love them!
Everyone in T-Town wants a Love Temecula license frame.
The mayor has sent me, there's somebody in Temecula that does...
that does not have a Love Temecula license plate holder.
Calm down, folks, it's okay. That guy flagged down Lieutenant Love at the new donut bar, asked for one. He gave it to him, and he loves it.
Well, it's the Temecula way. Thirty years of love have built this city after all.
It is all over Temecula talk. Quick, add hashtag Love Temecula License Plate Frames, hashtag While Supplies Last, hashtag Free at City Hall.
Wow, 20,000 likes already, and all heart likes. Awesome!
I love Temecula!
Look at all that love, just your average day in Temecula.
Dear, hey, dear, look at this!
What? Oh, my God, is it the kids?
Look at that!
Oh, my God, that's awesome. Hey, Al, we were named one of the top 10 wine travel destinations in Wine Enthusiast Magazine. And we were voted one of the safest cities in the United States, again!
I love Temecula!
The wine, the safety, the love!
I love Temecula!
Phil, why are you doing this?
Because, Mom, what if there's a place with even more love out there?
What's gotten into you? Is your friend Mark from Temecula Norte peer pressuring you to move?
You mean Marietta? Nah, Dad, I'm headed east to the Big Apple, where the ball drops in Times Square.
But, Phil, we have grapes that drop in our town square.
Yeah, and CNN ranks it among the most quirky New Year's events. You know, you'll never find a place as great as Temecula. And when you realize that, we'll be right here waiting, son.
Poor Phil, a teen searching for the light. Soon he'll realize Temecula is the most loving city out there. And there are infinite reasons to love Temecula. Picturesque vineyards and wineries, a mountainous backdrop, morning mist, afternoon breezes, family-friendly parades, equestrian neighborhoods, top-rated schools, an award-winning hospital, beautiful weather, and hometown love. And folks from all over love to celebrate here.
I mean, this really has been an amazing day, wouldn't you say?
Yes, I just love this venue, and the hot air balloons above us, and these wine glasses. I'm just in love with Temecula.
Okay, but what, what about me? You love me most, right?
More than Temecula? I do love these Temecula wines.
And what else are you gonna be doing for fun while visiting lovely Temecula?
Well, I know we have the Blue Wine Festival, so we're gonna check that out. And then, oh, we're seeing the Commodores at Pachanga.
Oh, babe, don't forget about Spa Pachanga. I can just see us there now.
They will for sure love Spa Pachanga, a sanctuary of luxury wellness and serenity, featured in the distinguished Forbes Travel Guide.
Mom, Dad, I'm sorry. As soon as I got to the city limits, I knew I made a mistake.
Oh, that's okay, son.
Hey, maybe we could fix up your 1980 Camaro for the rod run?
Hey, we got our boy back!
Promise me we'll never leave Temecula?
We promise.
I suppose you'd be hard-pressed to find anyone that didn't love Temecula. Sure, I imagine there are folks that have not yet been to Temecula. But one day, they'll be among over 2.7 million people who visit Temecula Valley each year and love it. Some never leave because there's no better place in the whole entire world. Come see for yourself how lovely Temecula is. Visit temeculaca.gov for more information.
So as you can see, we had lots of fun. There's a couple of other videos we'll show over the next few weeks. Just while we're at it, Kimberly Adams and Skylar, just stand up real quick. Okay, because of all the scenes, I think yours stole the show, okay?
But we've got great.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing? I want to sort of end on a happy note. My wife attended that, uh, for the first time with me, and, uh, she was blown away, like, much like everyone else is. But the, the rest of the day, and really much of the, the entire next week, they were walking, her and her friends at, at work were walking around, and they were going like this, like, hashtag Love Temecula. Like, they were, it was just like, it like, got into them. It was just, it was interesting to see the love for Temecula.
Thank you for sharing that. And, uh, like I said, there's a few other videos. All of them are going to be used for economic development. Nothing went to waste, and all the talent here was local. So, um, thanks to everybody who participated. If, um, that's it for my report, um, and I'm gonna move ahead to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive the reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes from May 28th, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, adopt the ordinance 19-08. Approve an outdoor vendor ordinance pertaining to public and private property. Long-range planning project number LR18-1663. This is a second reading. Approve annual renewal of various insurance policies, that's number five. Number six, approve the First Amendment to the Service Agreement with Vista Solutions, Inc., for access to the Vesta Communicator and Vesta Alert Emergency Notification Services. Seven, approve agreements with Lucidity, Inc. and Esri for the purchase and implementation of Lucidity Asset Management and related software. Eight, approve fiscal year 2019-20 schedule of waste and recycling rates pursuant to franchise agreement with CRNR. I'm gonna have a quick comment on that, but don't want, not want to pull it. Uh, let's see, number nine, approve the Third Amendment up to the disposition and development agreement for the Town Square Marketplace Development between the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the City of Temecula, and Town Square Marketplace Old Town LLC, located at successor parcel numbers 922-360-004, 005, 006, 007. I will be abstaining from that issue, and the city attorney will explain in a minute. Number 10, approve track map 37368, located on the east side of Butterfield Stage Road between Cali Chapos and Mariette Hot Springs Road. 11, approve the specifications and authorize solicitation to the pre-qualified bidders list for construction of the Ronald Reagan Sports Park Pump Track, PW18. Prove the minor con- For... 12, approve the minor construction services agreement with TWM Roofing, Inc. for the park restroom renovation, expansion, and ADA improvements, project PW17-06. And it looks like that's it for the consent calendar. So first, um, Mr. City Attorney, please describe my abstention.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Mayor Nigar will not participate in council, item number nine, and also not participate in successor agency, item number 15, uh, which is the Third Amendment to the Town Square Marketplace Disposition and Development Agreement. Uh, there was a potential conflict of interest for him with respect to the principal of the buyer, Mr. Truax, although it turned out not to be a conflict. Uh, in the abundance of caution, Mayor Nigar elected not to participate in order to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Uh, since both the council and successor agency items are on their respective consent calendars, I do not need to leave the dais unless the item is removed from the consent calendar. He may vote yes on each consent calendar because the action on those items will reflect his abstention, and his abstention on the basis, on this basis, will be recorded in the minutes for the city and the successor agency.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Are there any other noted abstentions? Okay, anybody want to pull anything? Okay, then before we take a vote, just a quick note on item number eight. I see Alex Berkovich is here, um, representing CRNR. Um, you know, every few years, you come before us and, and, and the adjustment to your contract, which is wholly appropriate. But I always like to say you're one of the best companies, CRNR, that has ever done business in the city of Temecula. Um, your, your customer service is second to none, and we really appreciate the work CRNR does. You know, nobody really thinks of their trash service, but that's the point. And, um, anyway, thank you. So with that, I'll entertain a-
Move approval.
That was moved by Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Mayor Protam Stewart. Please log your votes. Okay, and that passes 5-0 with the noted, uh, abstentions. The city council mayor wears many hats. At this point, I'm going to recess the city council meeting and turn the gavel over to Temecula Community Services District President, Mayor Protam Stewart, or President Stewart.
I will call to order the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Um, Madam Clerk, please note that we're all here. Are there any public comments? Okay, so all's we have is a consent calendar. Item number 13, approve the action minutes of May 28th, 2019. Item number 14, approve a sponsorship agreement with the Temecula Sister City Association for support of cultural exchange.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Did you get who moved and seconded? Awesome, please vote. All right, Director's Report.
Mr. President. Yeah, briefly, uh, summer activities are officially underway, beginning with the Summer Concert Series. On Thursdays at the CRC Temecula Amphitheater and Moonlight Movies in the Park. On Fridays at Temco Hills and Harvesting Community Park. And Old Town Live on Fridays and Saturdays here in Old Town. So go to temeculaca.gov for more information on lineups, dates, and times. And that concludes my report.
All right, General Matters Report?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
All right, any Board of Directors reports? None seen. I will adjourn this meeting till the next time. Uh, Tuesday, June 25th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'm going to convene the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Um, Madam Clerk, let the record reflect, all agency members are present. Do we have any public comments? Seeing that we have none, we, it looks like we have one item on consent. That's correct. That is item 15, approve the Third Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement for the Town Square Marketplace Development between the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the City of Temecula, and Town Square Marketplace Old Town LLC, located at successor parcel numbers 922-360-004, 005, 006, 007. I will be abstaining from this issue, as the city attorney explained earlier. Um, do we have a staff report, it's consent, right? Yeah, okay, so-
Move approval.
Move, second.
We have a move by Councilmember Ron, seconded by Councilmember Edwards. And, Mr. City Attorney, I will not vote on this issue, correct?
That's correct, and as I just, uh, disclosed earlier, I went through all the reasons and all the required disclosures.
Got it, yeah, there's only one item, so I'll just not vote. Okay, that passes 4-0 with the noted exception, or abstention. Okay, Executive Director, do you have anything for us?
Nothing further tonight.
Any of my Board of Directors?
Nope.
All righty, um, so I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, adjourn this meeting to the next scheduled meeting on June the 25th. So that's adjourned. All righty, now I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We're gonna go to the business section of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just clarify, that, your action was to recess-
Yes.
Start a meeting, because we have a joint meeting coming up, uh, uh, in just a couple of minutes for the budget on that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarity.
That's what I thought.
Right. All right, reconvening the Temecula City Council meeting, this is our business section. Item 16, introduce a public safety alarm systems ordinance and adopt related fee resolution at the request of Councilmember Ron. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to introduce, uh, Elsa Weigl and Lieutenant Hatfield, who will be presenting a joint, uh, public safety presentation. Again, this item's on, at the request of Councilman Ron, and it was something that we discussed in the latter part of last year when he was mayor. So, uh, I'll turn it over to the staff.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Nigar and councilmembers. Um, this is our long overdue Public Safety Alarm System Ordinance and, um, adopt the fee resolution that we've put into place, we've been working on. Right now, we're here to introduce chap, the new chapter 9.60 to the municipal code for the regulations of public safety alarm systems. This covers all burglary, robbery, fire, and medical system for the alarm systems. Our goal here is to reduce the number of false alarms that we're getting here within the city and to authorize fire, um, false alarm fees, as well as police department as well. The City of Temecula Police and Fire Department collectively respond to over 10,000 false alarm calls. A large percentage of these were false alarms, um, pertaining to commercial-type fire alarm systems, as well as residential-type burglary, um, systems. False alarms can be the result of several issues within the system. Um, our annual inspection program that we have currently in place, um, we have, we have come to find out that we've had over 108 fire alarm systems that have been faulty, that are part of this trigger to the false alarms. Bear with me, sorry. Um, the City of Temecula Police and Fire Department, the 10,000 alarms, I'm sorry, were, in our staff report, were indicated for January 1st of 2017 through March 1st of 2019. We actually had a typo on that date. It was actually July 1st of 2018 to March 1st of 2019. That's where we had the over 10,000. A large percentage of these calls were determined that did not require an emergency response. False alarms can be the result of faulty malfunctioning equipment, user error, poor installation, or lack of maintenance to the system and equipment. Once an alarm is triggered, the alarm company will receive a notification. The alarm company will notify the most appropriate agency based on the type of alarm activation. This can result in the response of fire or police, or a combination of both agencies. The dispatch of resources to false alarms commits these resources, prohibiting them to be available to respond to legitimate emergencies. For the police department during this timeframe, 87% of their alarm calls have been false alarms. They average 16 false alarm calls per day, which takes about eight deputy man-hours away from our resources or actual emergencies. The fire department inspections have assisted commercial businesses experiencing repetitive alarms throughout our annual program. This is in addition to the false alarms that come through our emergency command center. The City of Temecula Police and Fire Department has determined there is a significant cost associated with the response to false alarms. Average time for units to respond and mitigate a false alarm varies between 30 to 60 minutes, equating to about $375 per hour. To help defray the cost and unnecessary response by emergency personnel, alarm system owners shall be responsible for a fee assessment if the response by emergency personnel is declared a false alarm. We have put together a fee structure for the fee resolution for the fire department, as well as the police department, um, that we would like to put in place. Staff recommends the adoption of the ordinance into the municipal code and the fee resolution. This concludes our staff presentation, and we are available for questions at this time.
Elsa, nice staff report. I can't remember the last time you gave one. It's, it's been all these years.
It's been three years.
Has it been? Okay.
Be, see again in August.
Okay, thanks. Are there any questions of staff, Ms. Edwards?
So, Elsa, thanks, that was great, stunning, from July through March, 10,000 calls. Well, I knew it was a lot, but to hear it. So, let me understand this right, you, you do get repeat calls?
Correct.
Because, and, and you determined that some of those are from faulty systems. So when you get the repeat calls, um, obviously the owner of the building is notified, right?
Correct.
And still, even though they get repeat calls, they still fail to do anything about future calls?
Yeah, as a prime example, um, several months ago, we had a business here that we had 21 false alarm calls in four days. And we had instructed them to place a system on test to be able to fix the problem. It happened to do, it was a faulty, um, water flow switch. And they failed to do so, so finally, after the 21st call, and this is time that we have two stations that are- that are being constantly going back and forth between these calls, that we're now losing that response time from other areas in the city that actually need our services. It was finally when we had to be a little bit more forceful, and it got done, but it shouldn't take it to get to that point, but twenty-one calls. And we have a lot of—many businesses here will get five or six in a weekend, and we instruct them what to do, and it's just constant—they don't—they just don't do it.
I think they will.
They will now. And for fire—on fire standpoint, their first one is kinda like their freebie, because a lot of business owners are not familiar with the process, so it's kinda like we're out there to educate the community and let them know that this is their new municipal code that's in place. We want to be able to help them fix the problem and move forward. As far as the police department, their fees are very minimal, it's just to cover the basics for those calls, but a majority of their calls do come from residential systems as well, because a lot of the times on the commercial structures, they're right there with us on fire.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah. I noticed on the police one that there is no freebie, basically, right?
Correct.
It goes straight into—because I have a little problem with that, only because I have a business, and I kept getting alarm—my alarm kept going off, and I'd go—and I'd check that place from top to bottom. I could not figure out why. Come to find out, a spider had formed a web right over the sensor, and he was walking back and forth, and I didn't—you know, and I couldn't actually see that. So I would like to see at least a freebie for the police one, too, you know, just to give a business owner a chance to kinda look to see, you know, what the heck's going on. And, I mean, is there—is there any kind of a—like, for instance, for me, it wasn't a system issue, it was something I couldn't even see or have any—is there any kind of forgiveness policy at all? I mean, is there—I—I'm just talking as a business owner now, too.
We will have a forgiveness policy as far as in there to where the business owner can come and basically appeal the process.
Right.
And it'll be held by someone different than the person that was out there to be able to evaluate the situation. But as far as the burglary system and your security systems go on businesses, that's something that I can work with Chief McConnell on, and we can look at, and if we need to make an adjustment to the fee resolution and amend anything in it, we can look at moving forward with it that way.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers? All right, so we'll move to comments by the council. Mr. Ron?
Thank you. No, this is exciting. I mean, you know, we started this process, been an interesting evolution, started by talking about inspection programs in the city. We've moved there, and then we're—you know, last year, I really appreciate that we have, you know, both police and fire at the dais now giving us reports, and I think that's where this was originally identified, is—I, you know, was a little surprised by the number of false alarms we were seeing on both police and fire. So thanks for putting this together. Just—you know, look, and Mr. Stewart, I get exactly what you're saying, and—but, you know, the challenge, I think, from—from the city's perspective is each call is treated as though it's a real call. And even if it's the fifth one that night, you know, you never know, and—you know, there are reasons why every call, you know, are treated as though it's the real deal. And, you know, there's—I hate to get punitive about it, but when we looked at the number of real calls that were out there and the amount of time police and fire were spending and the resources we were dedicating to that versus, you know, the actual issues and crimes and, you know, impacting our response time, it—you know, it just seemed we needed something, and this isn't uncommon. I mean, a lot of jurisdictions have implemented these. But the one thing I'd like to see us do, and I think this might get to your question, Councilmember Stewart, is maybe we do a report back and, you know, pick a time, six or twelve months out, because, you know, the weird issues, you know, aside, what I'd be interested in is, you know, is this actually working, right? I mean, you know, certain—certainly, some businesses, homeowners, that kind of thing, will be more responsive once there's a punitive side, you know, and take the time to, you know, fix the system. And so I'd be interested to see, you know, how does—how do the data, you know, pan out in the next twelve months? Are we seeing, you know, improvement in overall response times? Are we seeing, you know, a better distribution of resources on actual incidents? Are we seeing, you know, the ability to respond and—you know, because my other concern is you throw that much data onto, you know, our call volume, and it kind of washes out some of the other stuff that's going on. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, if you can, you know, skim that off the top, what's left and where are our bigger issues, because this should be an iterative process. And then also, you know, if it works at all, you know, because if the—if we have habitual, you know, issues with same business that, you know, just decide to pay the fees and, you know—you know, you never know, and so do we need to, you know, do we need to be more punitive, or, you know, in the—in the case where, you know, we're running into issues like, you know, people have spiders, apparently.
That is.
And, you know, or do we need to, you know, be—a little bit less restrictive and just, you know, work with the inspection programs and work with folks to make sure that isn't an issue? But, you know, I think that might help resolve some of this, and I'd say let's just put it in place and see where we are in maybe six or twelve months.
Any other comments? Well, this is an ordinance, so I'll take a motion to have the city attorney introduce the ordinance.
Second.
All right, well, we'll take a motion by Mary Ann Edwards for the city attorney to introduce the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Temecula, adding chapter nine point six oh to the Temecula Municipal Code establishing regulations for the operations of public safety alarm systems.
Thank you. That was seconded by Councilmember Ron. Please cast your vote. And that new law goes into effect five zero.
Then we also need you to approve the resolution establishing the fees.
Thank you.
That can just be done by motion.
Okay, so we'll need a motion for resolution, number nineteen.
Second.
Next in order.
Move approval.
That was Edwards. Do we have a second?
Second.
That was Mr. Ron. Please cast your vote. And that passes five zero. Thank you, everybody. Now, I'm going to convene a joint meeting of the city council and the Community Services District and the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency. Mr. City Manager, how do you want to proceed? You want to start with your budget presentation and then move to the contracts? What's your pleasure?
Yes, sir. I'd like to start with the budget presentation.
It's your show.
And before we start that, I just have one comment to make. There are a few items in the proposed city budget that provide some funding for joint projects with the Temecula Valley Unified School District, including partial funding of school crossing guards, funding for maintenance of school fields and pools subject to joint use agreements with the city, and partial funding of city programs that complement the school district's career technical education or CTE programs. Councilmember Edwards is an employee of the school district, and Councilmember Schwenk was an employee of the school district through the end of this school year. Neither Councilmember Edwards nor Councilmember Schwenk participated in the development or administration of these programs on behalf of the school district, and because of that, both do not have conflicts of interest with respect to the approval of the budget. In the abundance of caution, however, both will register an abstention on these particular items that will be included in the budget approvals. Both will not need to leave the dais, and that abstention will be reflected in the minutes of the of the council.
Anything else, Mr. City Attorney?
That's it.
Mr. Adams, take her away.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As you recall, we held a budget workshop on May sixteenth to discuss in detail the proposed fiscal year nineteen twenty annual operating budget and capital improvement program. The presentation tonight will largely resemble that provided at the workshop, including the updated city manager employment contract and the related retention benefit for the executive staff that counsel, which will be considered in a separate agenda item at tonight's meeting. I am proud to report that we have balanced the city's budget out five years, fully funded all reserves, and we continue to provide the necessary resources today, tomorrow, and in the future to maintain the highest quality of life for this community. The benefits of five-year budget forecasting and modeling are numerous, and they allow the city council to evaluate our business options and make the necessary course corrections. And given that there are multiple pieces to our budgets, funding sources that in some cases they touch three different budgets, I would like to suggest that we provide the city council the full presentation and then come back for individual questions and discussion. If this is acceptable, I think it will allow the broader and much bigger financial picture to be presented and digested. The agenda for tonight will include an overview of the five-year CIP, recommendations outlined in the annual operating budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, the Temecula Community Service District operating budget, as well as a discussion on five-year strategic planning. But before we introduce the CIP and annual operating budget, I wanted to share some current demographic and economic information about the city. As provided by the California Department of Finance, Claritas Three-Sixty, and the Southwest Riverside County Board of Realty, the following demographics play a significant role in the strength of our local economy and our local budget. The current population of Temecula is one hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six. This is a point-five percent increase from two thousand eighteen. The median age in years in Temecula is thirty-five point three. This is slightly higher than the thirty-five point one in two thousand eighteen. The number of households is thirty-six thousand and one. This is up one point five percent from two thousand eighteen, and yes, I want to know who that one household is. The April median home price in Temecula was listed at four hundred and eighty-five thousand. This is up five percent from April two thousand eighteen. And the number of jobs assigned to Temecula is listed at fifty-five thousand, seven hundred. This is up one percent compared to two thousand eighteen. This does mark the highest job count in the city's history, and we remain the job center for Southwest Riverside County. April unemployment rate in Temecula was listed at three percent. This is down from three point one in April of eighteen, and in comparison to Riverside County, which was three point eight, the Calif—state of California was at three point nine, and the nation was at three point three, another encouraging trend. Our average household income is listed at one hundred and sixteen thousand. This is up six point two percent from last year. And with over two point seven million visitors per year to the Temecula Valley region, spending in excess of seven hundred and twenty-four million has greatly contributed to the economic health of our city. Temecula ranks in the top eight percent in retail sales generation across the state of California, and with public safety our top priority, we remain one of the safest cities in America, according to FBI statistics, and Temecula school districts ranking first in the county in academic achievement. While Temecula continues to provide an outstanding quality of life, as evidenced by these statistics, the local economy is beginning to display signs of a slower pace of growth. While there are no concerning indications of a looming recession, our revenue projections and ensuing budget requests are in line with the slowing economy. Later in the presentation, we will share a new financial analysis tool that we've created to address the potential impacts to future revenue. The annual operating budget in CIP has been drafted to be in line with the six core values of the city council adopted Quality of Life Master Plan from two thousand eleven, as displayed on the screen. And at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Pat Thomas, our Public Works Director, who will walk us through the proposed capital improvement program budget.
Thank you, Aaron, and good evening, Mayor Nagar and councilmembers. The Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP, is a comprehensive planning document that identifies and prioritizes major capital improvement projects over the next five years. Major capital projects are those in excess of thirty thousand dollars in cost and have a long-term lifespan. Projects in this document are reflected in each of the five fiscal years based on community needs, as prioritized by the city council, and the availability of funding. Many of the projects in the CIP are funded with one-time revenue sources that are non-recurring. Therefore, it's extremely important that the appropriate level of effort is expended to maximize the efficiency and effectiveness of these one-time dollars. Before I begin the CIP presentation, I wanted to provide a follow-up to the budget workshop discussion regarding the addition of pickleball courts. City staff will be implementing improvements that are included in this current fiscal year two thousand eighteen-nineteen CIP budget for sports court resurfacing to resurface the tennis courts at the Margarita Park. One of the tennis courts will be resurfaced and striped exclusively to provide four pickleball courts, including permanent nets and other tennis court—and the other tennis court will be resurfaced and striped for both pickleball and tennis. So we'll have four exclusive pickleball courts and four pickle—other courts that could be used for pickleball or tennis purposes, so a total of eight potential pickleball courts. This project is anticipated to be complete by the end of June of two thousand nineteen, or the end of this month. Additional pickleball inventory has also been discussed with the city's consultant conducting the Community Services Master Plan, with the potential of adding courts as part of the future Margarita Recreation Center renovation project. And also, I believe, we are scheduling a tournament—a pickleball tournament—for both councilmembers and city staff sometime in July. So on to the CIP program. There are a total of sixty-eight projects proposed in the CIP that are categorized as either circulation projects aimed at reducing traffic congestion, infrastructure and public facilities, parks projects, and a placeholder for available housing funds administered by the Sarda or the successor agency to the former RDA. There's approximately five hundred and eighty million dollars in total project costs within the CIP. Four hundred and thirty-five million represents the cost to complete the projects, and one hundred and forty-four million has been previously spent on the listed capital projects. We've identified three hundred and thirty-four million dollars in funded CIP projects for the term of the five-year CIP, including the fifty million dollar pending infra grant for the I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase Two project. Thirty-one point five million has been appropriated as new funding in the fiscal year nineteen twenty program, with eighty-seven million that was appropriated in a prior year that will be carried over to the fiscal year nineteen twenty program. There are a total of twelve new projects proposed in the CIP this year totaling nearly sixteen million dollars. These projects will be discussed in more detail in the slides that follow. There are twenty-two circulation projects totaling three hundred and forty-six million dollars in the program. Some of these traffic circulation improvements include the Butterfield Stage Road Extension and the Nicholas Road Extension and Improvements, which are associated with the Roar Paw Ranch Development Project, now known as Somers Bend, the Diaz Road Expansion, and Margarita Creek—or, excuse me, Marietta Creek Bridge at Overland Drive. That will complete the connection of Overland to Diaz Road. Also, a new project that's being added to the program is to conduct a feasibility study for a future Cherry Street extension across Marietta Creek as a low-flow crossing. The French Valley Parkway and I-15 Phase Two project, which again is the subject of the federal infra grant that we anticipate hearing the results on within the next few months, and the I-15 Congestion and Relief Project. This project is to add auxiliary lanes to I-15, which was the result of the work conducted by the Move I-15 Task Force. Ongoing pavement rehabilitation projects that will be emphasized in the coming year include Pabba Road, Rancho California Road from Humbert Drive to Margarita, Santiago Road from I-15 to Inez, and Avenida El Verado and Rio Nito. Also, the Inez Road Improvement Project is intended to expand Inez Road to four lanes between Rancho Vista and La Paz. There are also thirty-four infrastructure projects with over sixty-one million dollars in costs. Notable projects include the Bike Lane and Trail Program, which totals two point three million, of which one point four million is funded in the program. Part of the Bike Lane and Trail Program is a separate project that was created to complete the Temecula Creek South Side Trail at a cost of eight hundred thousand dollars. The Information Technology Department has been working with a consultant to install a comprehensive citywide surveillance camera program in city-owned facilities. The total cost of this citywide project is estimated to be three point five million. In light of the heavy storm activity this past year, it's prudent that we invest in a citywide drainage master plan to strategically manage the city's drainage systems. And the city's financial software system, which has been in place since two thousand and one, staff is recommending an upgrade to this system. It's estimated this project will take eighteen to twenty-four months at a cost of one point three million. With the funding in place for the reconstruction of the Margarita Recreation Center, it's anticipated this project will begin construction in mid-2020 and will be complete in calendar year 2021. The former Teen Village Project has been renamed to the CRC renovation with funding scaled down to five million. This project includes an allocation of five hundred thousand to begin the design in fiscal year nineteen-twenty. The city's current general plan document was adopted in 2005. This document is required to be updated, and funding has been appropriated for fiscal year 2122 to begin this process. The housing element, which is one of the required elements of the general plan, will be updated over the next two years utilizing grant funds. The San Grotus Creek Phase Two Project, the Margarita Undercrossing, is included as a new project this year and funded at two point four million utilizing a significant grant that was obtained by the city. And finally, as an economic development incentive, the city agreed to install sidewalks along DLR Drive to help facilitate the construction of the new Lexus dealership. The CIP includes eleven parks and recreation projects totaling over fifteen million. An allocation of five hundred thousand per year is included to continue to enhance the city's playground equipment at various park sites throughout the city. The CIP includes an annual allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand for park improvements. And after the passage of Measure S, the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library received several improvements, including new paint and furnishings. A new project has been added to the CIP to complete the renovations, including the replacement of the facility's carpeting. To maintain the health and safety requirements, the control system at the Eagle Source Splash Pad is in need of replacement at an estimated cost of three hundred thousand. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Luke Watson, Community Development Director, who will provide details on the SARDA Capital Improvement Budget.
Thank you, Pat. In 2010 and 2011, the former redevelopment agency issued affordable housing bonds, which were refinanced in 2017. As a result of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency in 2012, the remaining twelve point eight million in affordable housing bond proceeds were passed to the city for use in the development of affordable housing. In order to utilize these bond proceeds for the specifically intended purpose, which of course is affordable housing, the city is working with three separate affordable housing development teams with the goal of providing a portion of the remaining affordable housing bond proceeds to each project. Negotiations are making significant progress, and staff is anticipating that funding agreements for each project will be before the city council for consideration by the end of fiscal year nineteen-twenty. And I'm happy to report the negotiations are complete for the Vine Creek Project, and that agreement will be before the council on June 25th. I will now turn it back over to Aaron Adams to complete the CIP portion of the presentation.
The proposed CIP program was presented to the Public Traffic Safety Commission on April 24th and to the Community Services Commission on May 13th. On June 5th, the Planning Commission considered and approved the General Plan Consistency Review of the Fiscal Year 2020-2024 CIP. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Jennifer Hennessy, who will provide an overview of the fiscal year nineteen-twenty annual operating budget.
Thanks, Aaron. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm happy to report again this year that the general fund, which serves as the primary operating fund for the city, is structurally balanced with revenues exceeding expenditures and reserves are fully funded. Revenue is projected to exceed eighty point one million dollars this year, which reflects a one point three percent growth rate over the prior year, consistent with a slower pace of growth we're seeing in the local economy. Expenditures are projected to be seventy-eight point three million, which is an increase of four point five percent over the prior year, driven primarily by the investment in public safety, which is increasing by two point nine million or six point nine percent. General fund contributions to other city funds include the two million dollar annual debt service payment for the Civic Center, five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar payment for the Margarita Recreation Center, an additional two hundred thousand towards the I-15 Congestion Relief Capital Project, and four hundred and forty-two thousand for the installation of sidewalks along DLR Drive. The general fund is projected to end fiscal year nineteen-twenty with twenty-six point three million dollars in fund balance. Policy-level reserves, oops, sorry. Policy-level reserves are fully funded at nineteen point five million, which represents twenty-five percent of the general fund operating budget. After setting aside funds for future general fund commitments, an available fund balance of six point two million remains for one-time expenditures. The budget process begins each year in January with a projection of revenue, which serves as the foundation for the development of the operating budget. To begin this process, staff analyzes each major revenue source, reviews economic trends, and adjusts for local anomalies such as new businesses or development projects expected to occur during the coming year. In addition, we receive input from a team of consultants for both sales and property tax projections. Revenue is expected to increase by just one point three percent this next year. The city's largest revenue source is sales tax and is projected to remain flat this coming year due to a slowdown in the business and industry and the automotive sectors of the local economy. Property tax revenue is expected to be four percent higher due to Proposition 13 inflationary factor and the continued recapture of home values after the Great Recession. Property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees is tied to the growth in the city's assessed valuation and is also projected to grow by four percent. Franchise fees are received from local utility and cable providers for the use of the public right-of-way. This revenue source is projected to remain flat next year due to the decreasing customer base for cable subscribers, offset by increases in electricity rates. Measure S funds are accounted for in a separate fund for increased transparency, and five point seven million is proposed to be transferred into the general fund to cover the cost of public safety. As illustrated in the pie chart, general fund revenues come from a variety of sources. Sales tax makes up nearly half of the total revenue at forty-six percent. Property tax contributes eleven percent. Property tax in lieu of VLF also contributes eleven percent. Four percent comes from franchise fees, an additional four percent from TOT or transient occupancy tax, and five percent comes from the license and permit fees generated by the building, planning, land development, and fire departments. Measure S contributions total seven percent, and four percent is received as reimbursement revenue from the Capital Improvement Program for administration, as well as from Pachanga for the funding of one sworn police officer. The general fund operating expenditures for fiscal year nineteen-twenty are projected at seventy-eight point three million dollars. Public safety makes up the majority of the budget and reflects the investment of Measure S funding, and the police budget reflects a projected increase of six point eight percent, and the fire contract includes an increase of seven point two percent. Administrative departments reflect a twelve point nine percent increase due primarily to the three percent cost of living adjustment provided to employees in accordance with the city's labor agreements. Public Works budget is two point four mil- two point four percent above the prior year, and community development reflects a six point two percent increase due to the cost of living adjustment as well as higher internal service fund charges. The non-departmental category reflects a reduction of six point six percent as the prior year included a higher contribution to the retiree medical trust to increase the funded status. Fifty-seven percent of the fund resources are dedicated to public safety with an operating budget of over forty-five point one million dollars. Public Works, including CIP administration, parks maintenance, and land development make up nineteen percent of the total budget with a total budget of fourteen point five million. CIP administration is fully reimbursed from eligible capital projects and is reflected as general fund revenue. Administration, which includes the city manager's office, emergency services, economic development, finance, human resources, city attorney, city clerk, city council, and community support, total fourteen percent of the general fund operating budget. And community development, which includes planning and building safety, receives eight percent of the general fund with a total budget of five point nine million. I'd like to now turn the presentation over to Police Chief Lisa McConnell, who will present the Police Department budget for fiscal year nineteen-twenty.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As the largest expenditure of the general fund, the Police Department budget is projected at thirty-four point eight million for the coming year. The budget reflects a five point six percent increase over the prior year and includes the replacement of a motorcycle, the purchase of a new razor vehicle for the homeless outreach team, and the replacement of the commercial enforcement truck. The budget also includes continued fifty percent cost-sharing arrangement with Temecula Valley Unified School District to fund five school resource officers. The Police Department is currently staffed with one hundred and twelve sworn officers, seventeen community service officers, and seventeen administrative personnel. And now I'd like to introduce Battalion Chief Brad Cassidy, who will be presenting the fire budget.
Thank you, Chief McConnell. Good evening. The Fire Department budget is projected at eighteen point nine million, which is an offset of about eight point seven million fire tax credit collected via property tax payments. This net impact of the city is ten point two million, which is a seven point two percent increase over the prior year. The budget includes the refurbishing of the floors of Fire Stations 84, 92, and 95, and the replacement of the generator of Fire Station 73. As part of last year's budget, the replacement of the city's ladder truck was approved, with the cost being spread over the two fiscal years. It's anticipated that the new fire apparatus will be received by the end of June 2020. The department has seventy-five employees and maintains the four-person staffing engine module. I will now turn it over back over to Jennifer to finish the operating budget section of the presentation.
The non-safety departments represent the remaining forty-three percent of the general fund with a total budget of thirty-three point one million dollars, which is an increase of one point five percent over the prior year. The fiscal year nineteen-twenty budget includes the addition of one point seven five authorized positions plus the three percent cost of living adjustment, partially offset by the reduction in project staffing salaries. Additionally, the proposed executive retention benefit Aaron mentioned in the introduction section has been included in the operating budget at an annual cost of one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And finally, the budget continues the funding for community support grants at one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Capital outlay expenditures are those that exceed five thousand dollars and have a useful life of more than three years. Capital outlay requests include the replacement of several fleet vehicles, including five for Public Works, three vehicles for police, two park ranger vehicles for TCSD, and one pool vehicle for the city manager's office. Additional requests include the replacement of technology equipment, copiers, a projection system at the theater, the library's RFID tag station, and the installation of KMA's video exhibit in the chamber lobby displaying the city's history. In line when, in line with recent economic trends, Measure S was projected conservatively with a two percent growth rate and is expected to reach twenty-seven point seven million in fiscal year nineteen-twenty. Expenditures have been programmed in accordance with the council's appropriation guidelines, which are summarized in the following slides. The budget reflects an allocation of Measure S funding by appropriation category, public safety, asset management, capital projects, and general services, which are pri- which are used primarily to support Community Services Department. Public safety remains the city's top priority with five point eight million invested of Measure S to fund eleven police officer positions, staffing at Fire Station 95, surveillance camera maintenance, and the future replacement of five, of fire vehicles. Investments in asset management ensure the ongoing maintenance and replacement of the city's aging infrastructure. Vehicles, facilities, and technology are funded adequately into the future. The allocation to asset management includes five hundred thousand dollars to each replacement fund, including fleet, technology, and facilities replacement. The street maintenance fund will receive one point five million dollars to accumulate resources for the future replacement of the city's road network. A total of thirteen point one million, or forty-two percent of Measure S, is recommended to fund forty-eight different capital projects this coming year, with larger projects listed here. And a total of nine million dollars is allocated to fund TCSD, the library, and residential streetlights, as well as an increase to the level of service provided by parks maintenance. As mentioned in the budget workshop, staff is recommending an increase in the city manager's purchasing and settlement authority levels. Purchases over thirty thousand dollars currently require council approval. The budget resolution up for consideration at tonight's meeting reflects this level to be increased to sixty thousand dollars in order to maximize efficiencies in the procurement process. Similarly, the settlement authority for personal injury and property damage claims is currently seventy-five hundred dollars for the city manager. This threshold is requested to be increased to twenty-five thousand dollars. The budget policies included in the operating budget also include the addition of signature delegations for both purchasing and settlement authority so that the city manager can delegate a signing authority to the Public Works Director and the Community Services Director, as well as the risk manager, to further allow for timelier procurement and settlement contracts. Now I'll turn it back over to Aaron to discuss staffing levels.
Staffing levels citywide have remained relatively flat since 2012. In recent years, as the general fund has grown, the demands on the city have grown as well. As such, I am recommending the addition of four point seven five full-time equivalent positions in fiscal year nineteen-twenty, bringing the number of authorized positions to one seventy-six point four five. This does include the five council member positions. In addition, as a result of the annual classification study process as outlined in the city's labor agreement and thoroughly analyzed and recommended by a professional third party, I am recommending the reclassification of six existing positions. Three of these positions are represented, and three are management-level positions. The corresponding salary range is reflected in the salary schedule included within the staff report for the adoption of the fiscal year nineteen-twenty annual operating budget. And even with the recommended positions and previous city council consideration and a thirty-six percent increase in the general fund budget, city staffing levels still remain thirty-four positions below the peak of 2010 authorized positions in 2007, 2008. This fact is certainly not lost on me and is a testament to the dedicated individuals that make up our existing workforce. It also speaks to how special a place Temecula is that has allowed us to hire and retain top talent in the region over the years with a heart and commitment to public service here in Temecula. I'm very proud of what we have been able to accomplish and the organizational excellence that we continue to strive towards on a daily basis. I'd like to introduce Kevin Hawkins, our Director of Community Services, who will provide the highlights of the Temecula Community Service District budget. Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Adams. Thanks, Aaron. The mission of TCSD is to improve the quality of life for residents through a complement of programs, services, events, and activities, or as we call it, creating community through people, parks, and programs. In the fiscal year nineteen-twenty TCSD annual operating budget, the projected revenue is estimated at twenty-four point four million dollars. The major funding sources include eleven million from TCSD rates and charges, one point eight seven million, which represents the TCSD portion of Measure C funding. The other half goes to park maintenance, which is included in the general fund, nine million in contributions from Measure S, and two point five million from a combination of recreation fees, contract class user fees, and other revenue sources. Again, this brings us to total projected revenues of twenty-four point four million. The next slide provides an overview of our proposed expenditures at twenty-four point eight million dollars. The main expenditure categories are twelve point three million to fund our parks and recreation facilities and programs, eight point five million for recycling and refuse hauling, one point eight million for slope maintenance, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand for residential street lighting, one million to operate the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the operation and maintenance costs associated with the Harvestin Lake Park, and five thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars for dirt road maintenance services at Leafer Road. A few community services program highlights for fiscal year nineteen-twenty include a very special thirtieth anniversary community celebration on December 1st, and yes, Temecula turns thirty this year. We love everything about Temecula, which will be reflected in a fun-filled, family-friendly, and safe environment here in Old Town. And from Old Town to the Ronald Reagan Sports Park, the Fourth of July Parade and Fireworks Show always features great fun in a safe and inclusive environment for the entire family and will again showcase Temecula's unrivaled patriotic spirit. Christmas time will offer Santa's Electrolight Parade, Santa's House at Penny Pickles Workshop, and ice skating here in Old Town. One of my favorite events, Special Games, is now in its twelfth year and is always an inspirational celebration of our special needs athletes. Southern California's Premier Car Show, the annual Temecula Ride- Southern California's Premier Car Show, the annual Temecula Rod Run, will now be held in May, when we anticipate warmer weather, and we'll bring back the usual crowds of over fifty-five thousand for this signature event. As we just experienced this past weekend here in Old Town, art comes to life in the form of chalk murals, handcrafted jewelry, photography, and more, at the annual Art and Street Painting Festival, held in June. Additionally, the city will proudly pay tribute to our local veterans at the annual patriotic Salute to Veterans Day event, and that features the Temecula Valley Symphony on the steps of the Civic Center. And speaking of the symphony, a tribute to heroes Memorial Day observants will also be performed out front by the Temecula Valley Symphony. The city also continues to collaborate with our wonderful, wonderful nonprofit friends' groups for both the Children's Museum, celebrating their fifteenth anniversary this year, and the Temecula Valley History Museum, as well as the Old Town Temecula Association and Visit Temecula Valley, to bring residents and visitors these wide-ranging seasonal attractions, which are synonymous with the great quality of life here in Temecula. This year, TCSD staff will continue our focus on providing the highest caliber of inclusive programs and services, such as our Global Citizens Viticulture and Horticulture Program, which earned an award of excellence from the California Parks Recreation Society, and has become a model for other programs in the region. Other inclusive services programming, such as Supporting Kids Involving Parents, known as SKIP, and High Hopes, continue to provide valuable support to the community. And with the arrival of summer, we again look forward to a variety of activities at Eagle Sound Playground and Splash Pad, including the collaborative Summer Food Service Program that serves over fifteen hundred healthy lunches to children. On September twenty-fifth, the Mary Phillips Senior Center will celebrate its twenty-sixth anniversary. As an outcome of the senior service master plan process, staff-led enrichment and recreation programs abound, and we will continue the Silver Shuttle Program, which provides reliable and quality transportation options for our senior population. Also at the senior center, the intergenerational tech program continues to be a hit, founded on a simple premise that young people are a valuable resource for technology. This very successful intergenerational program, which pairs teens with seniors, has seen participation up over twenty-five percent the previous year, requiring additional breakout sessions. When not working on an update to the city's oral history project, our cultural arts team continues to showcase a variety of quality offerings through the Old Town Temecula Community Theater, regular series such as Jazz at the Merc, and Art Off the Walls on the first Friday of the month. The History Museum looks to rebrand their array of old traditions and new opportunities offerings under a broader brand, including a focus on arts and culture. As part of this effort, the museum has introduced a successful new monthly program, Second Saturdays, which celebrates the history and heritage of the various and diverse cultures making Temecula home. Another highlight was the overwhelmingly positive reaction to the Around and About Temecula web series, which brings the pages of our recreation and theater brochures to life. Around and About Temecula also received a TPRTS Award of Excellence for its role as an excellent marketing and communication tool for the residents of Temecula. With over thirteen thousand participants in our contract classes and almost two thousand classes offered for all ages and stages of life, TCSD will continue to offer the highest quality of award-winning sports, recreation, and aquatics programs for a very deserving community. As community ambassadors, our park rangers continue to safeguard the city's parks and open spaces, which include a newly revamped Harvestin Fishing Program, the renovation of five new playgrounds, with several more soon to follow, a growing pickleball community, as we heard, including both the city council and city staff, and a recently approved adoptive park program. Also a critical part of TCSD operations, the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library provides excellent library services to nearly fifteen hundred visitors each day, with the monthly circulation of approximately fifty thousand items, and that's the highest in the county. In concert with other city staff, public safety, the nonprofit community, faith-based organizations, and regional partners, and as part of our wide-ranging quality-of-life efforts, TCSD will continue to provide homeless outreach program administration and coordination to address the issue of street-level homelessness here in Temecula. Thanks to a decision that was made at last year's budget workshop and subsequent council adoption, TCSD is well underway with the much anticipated and long overdue Community Services Master Plan process. Now, the last Community Services Master Plan, then referred to as Parks Master Plan, was completed in nineteen ninety-three. This comprehensive Community Services Master Plan process will cover all of TCSD facilities, programs, and services to meet the needs of the community as it evolves over the next twenty years. This process will take approximately twelve months, and there will be multiple opportunities for the community to participate and for their input, which is a critical part of this process, and the main ingredient of the humble excellence that TCSD strives for in everything we do. Now, from community services to community development, I'd like to again turn it over to Community Development Director Lou Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Finally, the proposed successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, otherwise known as SARDA, fiscal year nineteen twenty operational budget includes debt obligations of the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency. The city's redevelopment agency was dissolved by the state in two thousand and twelve, and since then, the city has worked to wind down the remaining SARDA obligations. It is critical to note that the funding source for the repayment of the SARDA obligations is the Riverside County Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund. This fund is made up of property tax receipts collected by the county of Riverside. The city's only responsibility is to administer the SARDA obligations until the term of those obligations expires. The county trust fund proceeds are simply passed through to the city. No general fund dollars are obligated or used to satisfy the SARDA obligations. The State Department of Finance approved the following outstanding obligations for fiscal year nineteen twenty. First, debt service payments for the former RDA bonds, which total five point six million. Second, one point one million is other DOF-approved obligations, including affordable housing obligations. And lastly, supplemental education revenue augmentation fund, reimbursements of nine hundred thousand dollars, which is the first of what is expected to be annual reimbursements, until the reimbursements total the original SERAF amount of five point two million. These funds are to be used solely for the rehabilitation or construction of affordable housing. I will again turn it back over to Erin Adams to continue the presentation.
Per city policy, staff creates a five-year financial forecast of the general fund, Measure S fund, and TCSD each and every year. These long-range forecasts serve as strategic planning tools to help evaluate the city's ability to meet its long-term obligations. Granted, priorities will change over time, yet the five-year modeling has become an invaluable tool for us to utilize to ensure a solid fiscal and stable future is paramount. We are not just concerned about the year in front, but rather those to follow. The primary benefit of long-range planning is to alert decision-makers of trends in time to implement changes if necessary.
The five-year forecast includes realistic, yet conservative, revenue growth assumptions based on recent trends and known changes on the horizon. Expenditure projections reflect information received from the county related to both police and fire service contracts, fixed staffing levels for all non-safety departments, the maintenance of police staffing ratios to keep pace with population growth, and the four persons per engine fire staffing model. Additionally, any operating expenditures needed to support future programs and facilities identified in the CIP are included in the five-year projection. With the infusion of Measure S funding, the five-year outlook for the general fund remains fiscally strong, with revenues exceeding expenditures, reserves fully funded, and the general fund structurally balanced in all five years. Measure S funds are programmed in accordance with the council's appropriation guidelines, and this table illustrates the rapid shift of funding towards public safety as the costs for police and fire continue to rise over the coming five years. Measure S funding dedicated to public safety grows from nineteen percent this next year to fifty-one percent by year five, due to the contract escalation and the addition of five sworn officers over the next five years. The ongoing reinvestment into the city's roads, vehicles, facilities, parks, and technology necessary to properly maintain or replace our city's assets are a priority and will be funded between three to three and a half million dollars per year over the next five years. Measure S funds available for capital projects will lessen over time as the operational cost of public safety and TCSD increase. General services include funds to augment Measure C and program revenues to maintain existing service levels within TCSD, the library, and Service Level B residential streetlights.
As part of our ongoing financial analysis, we are monitoring several state and county actions that have the potential to impact the city's budget. The two thousand and seventeen State of California Housing Package, which includes fifteen bills designed to increase the supply of housing in California, it is anticipated that the city will be subject to a number of unfunded mandates to meet the proposed housing goals of the state of California. Assembly Bill Two One Three has been introduced to restore the lost vehicle license fee revenue resulting from the passage of Senate Bill Eighty-nine in two thousand and eleven. If this bill passes, the city could recoup one-time loss of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in VLF revenue from the Vale Ranch and Red Hawk annexations. The Riverside County Sheriff's Rate Modification: For over a year, the Riverside County Board of Supervisors have indicated that they are considering a change to the sheriff's rate to include certain baseline services that are currently considered mutual aid. With the election of the new sheriff, the board is postponing this decision until the fall. The proposed change to the rate could impact the police budget by two point three million, if implemented as proposed last year. And finally, the future relocation of State Fire Station Twelve in Old Town. With the state's proposal to relocate the state-owned Fire Station Twelve from Old Town to outside the city limits, we would need to enter into a legislative solution to have the first right of refusal to acquire Station Twelve in lieu of the state's property disposal process. The relocation is expected to take up to six years to complete, allowing us time to fiscally plan for such an acquisition. And last week, I did have a good conversation with Assembly Member Marie Waldron introducing this situation, and will be providing her details in the ensuing months about introducing legislation. Finally, as we enter the tenth consecutive year of economic expansion following the Great Recession, we are mindful that a contraction in the economy is likely on the horizon. As mentioned in the introduction of tonight's presentation, we are seeing leading economic indicators showing signs of reduced growth. To ensure we are adequately prepared, we have created a financial sensitivity model to demonstrate the volatility of our operating budget to fluctuations in the economy. The model focuses on the revenue and expenditures of the three primary operating funds: the general fund, Measure S, and TCSD. It allows us to enter different scenarios and projected fluctuations in revenue and graphically display the impacts on our available fund balance. Based on fluctuations in revenue, the model calculates the level of reduction measures necessary to maintain the fiscal solvency over the ensuing five-year period. This chart illustrates the aggregated fund balance reserves and available balance as reflected in the proposed budget. The blue bar shows the ending fund balance, the gray bars show the twenty-five percent reserve levels, and the green line tracks the funds available after meeting the twenty-five percent reserve requirement. If the green line falls below the red line, then we're utilizing reserves, reserve funds to balance out. For illustration purposes, we modeled a five percent reduction in revenue over the next couple of years. The ending fund balance declines to under two million dollars, causing us to dip into our reserves, as shown in the green line on the chart. This model illustrates the sensitivity to economic shifts which directly impact our city revenues. But after identifying the impact, the model then allows us to develop contingency plans to rebalance the funds. In this scenario, the city could withstand a five percent reduction in revenue by deferring contributions to the asset replacement funds and deferring CIP projects to future years when the funds become available. This level of reduction would not trigger the need to reduce city services, nor cut operating budgets or staffing levels, and the twenty-five percent reserve would remain fully intact. It is through this level of financial analysis and management that the city is poised to remain in a solid fiscal position and be able to respond to a potential downturn in the economy. In closing, I would again just like to reiterate the uniqueness and the privilege of the opportunity we have been given to balance out five years, meet our reserve requirements, fund public safety to our desired levels, invest heavily into needed capital projects, invest into proper maintenance of existing assets, and maintain the high quality of life of programs and services our residents have come to expect. We have a great deal to be proud of, and we remain a blessed community on many fronts. It is certainly deserving to express our thanks and gratitude to our citizens who have allowed us to be in this enviable position to provide this level of delivery and service. To highlight again, the major investments for the coming fiscal year include in excess of fifty million dollars for police, fire, and other public safety services and equipment, a total investment of twelve million dollars to continue to maintain our city's road network, and over three hundred and thirty-two million dollars has been identified to fund sixty-eight capital improvement projects over the next five years. I'd like to thank all the department heads and their staff for their efforts in preparing excellent budget submittals. I also want to recognize the members of the budget team, who have dedicated many, 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 many hours over the past several months to complete this year's AOB and CIP binders. My thanks to Jennifer Hennessy, Rudy Graciano, Pascal Brown, and Tricia Hock. And with that, your staff is available to answer any questions you have. Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Ryan.
Just, just a quick question. The sensitivity analysis included a five percent reduction in revenues. How does that compare to the Great Recession?
The Great Recession occurred over really three fiscal years, three to four fiscal years, and that was more on the range of between twenty and twenty-five percent of a reduction.
Just, it's important to note that this city weathered the Great Recession very, very well, in fact, not having to dip into our reserves during that incredible time.
Anything else, council member?
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stewart.
Yes. The SARDA debt, that's being paid for with monies that we wouldn't normally get because we don't have the, I mean, if we didn't have the debt, we wouldn't get the money. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, okay. And I just want the public to realize that, that that debt is actually being paid for because of smart planning from these gentlemen and ladies right here. Also, the jobs numbers count. Does that include Pechanga, or no?
I, I would venture that does not include Pechanga, which obviously is not in the city limit, so it wouldn't be, wouldn't be accounted for.
All right.
But they are probably the largest employer in the subregion.
That's why the fifty-five thousand is actually...
And why it's not sixty thousand.
Exactly. Right.
Do you have anything?
Do I have any questions?
Okay. No questions as from the council at this time. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay. So, council comments? Anybody? Dr. Ryan?
Oh, just a couple. You know, I asked City Manager's Office for the numbers on our city's population since nineteen eighty-nine as it grows, because we report that out every year during these budget hearings and all that. And just kind of curious, I, I know we, you had addressed it in the City of the City, but I think it's worth mentioning that our, our city's population is leveling out, right? I mean, you know, the explosive growth that you saw, you know, from the late eighties into the nineties and a little bit into the two thousands, we're starting to level off now. And I think that's just kind of an important thing to note, because it also means we're moving into that maintenance mode as a city instead of a growth mode. But, but also for all of us who moved here because we like the small-town feel, it also means that we're leveling off and maintaining the small-town feel. So I thought, worth, worth mentioning, and I appreciate you guys sending me that information. The, I said this at the last hearing, but, you know, way to go on the city cost of living increases at, you know, sort of year over year of basically one point five percent. Mr. City Manager, that's incredible, and not to belabor the point with our police and, and fire departments. and, and fire departments, but you guys need to take a lesson and, and send that message up the chain, because if the City of Temecula is able to increase, you know, nearly five positions and have a cost of living increase and increase all of the, the activity within our staff and, you know, sort of movement in, in, in the ranks as well, and still maintain only a five, or a 1.5% increase year over year, that's, that's remarkable. And, and I don't say that lightly. I think at, at some point, maybe we do need to start to, you know, reach out to, you know, our folks at the state and, and county level and, and maybe share some notes, because I think, you know, those, you know, you look at the long-term projections of police and, and fire costs, and it's just simply not sustainable if we're looking at, you know, six to, to eight percent annually, you know. Eventually, it just, it, it, you know, the, the financial model just simply blows up. So, anyway, kudos on that. I just wanted to give a quick shout-out there. You know, the, the other thing on the sensitivity analysis, I mentioned this before again, but because it's a different hearing, I'll just say fantastic tool. You know, I've, I've never seen a city do a sensitivity analysis like that before, and it gives us, I think, some peace of mind knowing that, you know, under certain conditions and into the future, you know, we will be able to weather it internally without too much issue. You know, I, the reason I asked, it was between the last budget hearing and, and, and this one, you know, I, I, I would like us to just have in the back pocket, you know, that, that idea that if we do hit, you know, Great Recession-type model into the future, clearly, the city was able to weather that without dipping into reserves before, but just to make sure that we, you know, we keep that, and that's a phenomenal tool that I've, like I said, I've never seen a city use before. So, really, Ms. Hennessy, just phenomenal work there. The, the other thing, you know, it occurred to me as I was listening and, and watching other cities over the last, you know, couple decades, you know, we, we hit this thing this year where revenue versus expenditure, you know, we've got more revenue coming in than we, than we have going out. And the one thing I don't see us doing is basically a, a, a spending spree, you know, on the council's side, where we look at that as an opportunity to, you know, fund pet projects or, or, you know, special projects. And I've, I've seen a lot of cities do that over the years, and I have to say how proud I am of this city council, that that's not even a conversation point. Now, I'm not planting a seed here, so, so don't get me wrong, but, but, but honestly, I think, you know, it, it takes a steady hand and a long-term vision, and I have to say, really, it's, it's nice to see that this isn't even part of our, our city's culture, that that would even be, be a consideration today. And so, really, just, you know, glad, glad to see that. And then the last thing I wanted, because this has come up in a, in a couple of our recent city council meetings and, and came up earlier today, the discussion of cannabis as a source of income for the city and, and a potential revenue source. Look, I serve on the Bureau of Cannabis Control, and I will tell you that the constant conversation with those folks and those cities that are, you know, different than we are in our adoption of cannabis, is that the green wave that we all thought, you know, was, was promised certainly has never come to fruition. And, you know, not all communities are benefiting the way we had anticipated they would. And so I would just say, you know, there's some caution in, in the way the City of Temecula has done things on that regard. And, and certainly, the, the economic benefits of, of, of that kind of business don't outweigh the, the costs to us, because, you know, as, as was mentioned during the mayor's State of the City address, there was a considerable effort earlier this year with the District Attorney's Office to shut down, you know, twelve illicit dispensaries, many of which were being run by drug cartels right here in the city. And, you know, it comes at a considerable expense, but glad to see that we're, we're, you know, taking that approach, but, you know, not to encourage us going down a path to, you know, adopt certain choices of business types in the city because of a, a potential revenue, and certainly not one that's materialized in, in many communities in the, in the state. So, just a word of caution there. And then, well, that's it. You know, excellent job this year. Let's, let's call it a night.
So, just, just following along the, those lines of thinking with cannabis, I thought it was interesting that the comment was made that the speaker wanted to offset the impacts of drunk driving by making cannabis legal. What? Cannabis also has impacts and impacts you when you drive, and so I, that didn't make any sense, but anyway, just a comment. You don't want to offset the effects of alcohol by approving sales of cannabis in the city. I think it was to increase sales tax so that we can hire more police officers to then deal with the drunk driving. Of course, they would have to be dealing with more marijuana also while driving. So, you noted five years' balanced budget, five years out, and that in, that in itself is a major accomplishment. So, congratulations and, and thank you guys for working so hard. Five years out, the balance, the budget is balanced. And another reason that we see a leveling off of sales tax revenue is because in the early days, Temecula had the only Walmart, the only Costco, and one of the busiest ones in the nation, the only auto dealerships, and many other things. And now that the region is growing, cities like Menifee are adding their own, you know, Walmart, large box stores, Target, and those types of things. So, people are staying probably closer to home to shop in their own community at those big-box stores. However, I can tell you that I do have people that tell me on a regular basis, even though their city has those stores, they still come to Temecula because they do that shopping, plus they go out to eat, they do other things while they're here. So, thank you to all the people who come to Temecula and contribute to our sales tax. We appreciate it. But as the region grows, other people are spending money a little bit closer to home. So that's another reason for leveling off, and still we maintain a five-year balanced budget.
Anything else?
Nope.
Councilmember Swain.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I'll just be very brief, no need to beat this over the head, but great job, really, just a fantastic job by everyone involved in this process. I'm extremely proud to be sitting up here to be a part, a small part of this process. You know, you look at balanced budget, fully funded reserves, and we can talk about that all day long, but we continue to offer just a huge array of services and, and with community services and the job Public Works does, and just every department across the board is just fantastic. So, you know, I know we're headed in that, in that right direction, and, and just proud to be a small part of it, and, and I know our community is, is proud as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, may we take one vote for all the resolutions?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So, I need a motion to move Item One, Item Two, Item Three, Item Four, Item Five, Item Six.
Yes, move approval.
That's Marianne Edwards on the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
That's Mayor Protem Stewart. Please register your vote. And that's going to pass, five-zero with no abstentions. Again, good job on the budget. We're going to move to, let's see, where am I? Item eighteen, and we have about fifteen minutes before we have to recess or extend the meeting. So, Mr. City Manager?
I'll try to move quick.
It's on you, so what you're going to do?
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I alluded to this agenda item in my opening remarks of our operating budget presentation. As a part of my tenure with the City of Temecula, and specifically working in my capacity as your city manager, the retention and attraction of top talent is paramount to our success. The city is, of course, bigger than me and any one individual, but the collective assembly of a high-performing executive team is difficult to not notice and appreciate. But it goes beyond just noticing. Ask any general manager of a professional sports franchise after they have won a championship. What do they intend to do to retain the talent they desire to continue winning championships? It's simply leadership. In my opinion, that is the job of the CEO of any company to consider, or in this case, me, the city manager. The retention benefit I propose to the city council for the members of the executive team is well-thought-out, with a clearly-defined eligibility criteria, is not perceval, meaning it cannot add to the unfunded liability, nor will it spike an employee's wage for pension purposes. It was also the single most important item I discussed with you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council as part of my annual evaluation this year for my related goals, objectives that tie directly to the next agenda item on this evening. The city has historically included executive positions within the Management Compensation Plan, or the M C P, and we have executed separate at-will agreements for each executive position. The evolution of the public-sector labor market over the past ten years has made employee attraction and retention more challenging, and it has become imperative to maximize strategies to retain top talent in the city's workforce. As the leaders of the organization, I feel it is critical to the future success of the city to retain a high-performing executive team, to continue to provide first-class service, business continuity, maintain workforce stability and morale. By establishing individual employment agreements for each executive staff member, the city can tailor a compensation package designed to attract and/or retain an employee using specific incentives that are meaningful to that individual. As we have discussed as part of my performance goals, the importance of retaining our current executive team is paramount to my success, and I am recommending a performance-based retention benefit equivalent to the allowable normal contribution limit to an I R S Section 457B deferred compensation plan to be included in the employment agreements. For 2019, this equates to $19,000 for each eligible executive. To receive this retention benefit, each executive would need to obtain outstanding performance on three of their last five evaluations and have obtained five years of executive-level service with the City of Temecula. To ensure ongoing fiscal solvency, this benefit would only be offered in the years where the General Fund reserves are fully funded. Senate Bill 1436 requires the council to receive an oral report summarizing proposed changes to executive compensation before taking action. As such, I am recommending the council approve the employment agreements, including the benefits previously provided to them in the M C P and the new retention benefit for the following executive team members: Assistant City Manager Greg Butler, Human Resource Manager Isaac Garabey, Director of Community Services Kevin Hawkins, Director of Finance Jennifer Hennessy, the Director of Information Technology/Support Services Michael Hesslin, the Director of Legislative Affairs/City Clerk Randy Joel, the Director of Public Works Pat Thomas, and the Director of Community Development Luke Watson. If all eight executive positions meet the eligibility criteria, the annual cost of this benefit is $154,204, including applicable Medicare taxes. Additionally, it is recommended that I be authorized to establish and/or amend the employment contracts in the future as needed to address attrition in a timely manner. Because the executive staff members are currently covered under the Management Compensation Plan, it is necessary to remove sections applicable only to the executive positions. Therefore, in tonight's agenda packet is a red-line version of the M C P outlining the proposed changes. Three additional changes are noted in the M C P to reflect the change in the Metropolitan Statistic Area used to calculate the July first cost-of-living adjustment, also to clarify contract language related to the retiring medical, dental, and vision premium reimbursement, and to include the opportunity to cash out administrative or executive leave in December as well as in June. And this concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of staff?
Uh-uh.
Questions of staff? Okay, C nine. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers? Okay, council discussion. Any discussion?
No, I just want to retain our fantastic leadership so we keep moving in the right direction.
All right. I don't see anybody in the queue to discuss, so I'll add my two cents. Something I mentioned at the State of the City, in the history of the city, we've only had twelve former council members, and that has been, at least for us, maybe it isn't for other cities, but for the City of Temecula, part of our stability. I think that stability also extends to staff. A turnover of staff makes you lose continuity. Also, you have to keep re-establishing the team. I just think that keeping an intact team is extremely important.
Well, and as mayor, some projects take twelve years to, from start to finish.
Exactly. In fact, I was talking to the city attorney today, and we were lamenting that, you know, due to term limits on the state level, whether you agree with them or not, nobody has any long-term view on the state level. They just don't, because you can't get anything done within the terms that are allotted to you.
Right.
So, and that's what you just alluded to. So, without further elaboration, I'm going to go ahead and accept the motion.
Move approval.
That was Marianne Edwards.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Swank. Please register your votes. Okay, that's five-zero. Congratulations, staff. Well done, Mr. City Manager. I know you were under the gun to get it done. Let's go ahead so we can wrap up the meeting without having to extend it. Let's see here. Hold on. So we have to take yours down separately, Mr. City Manager, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Go for it. You're on. Number nineteen, approve the Third Amendment, the City Manager, Aaron Adams Employment Agreement. And by the way, if we have to extend the meeting, we'll extend the meeting. It's just about that time.
I should be done by then.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the closed session of May twenty-eighth, 2019, the council completed the City Manager's performance review and directed me, a city attorney, to prepare an amendment to Mr. Adams' employment agreement. We have a comprehensive staff report that outlines the changes that were made. There have been essentially five changes that are being proposed for his agreement. The first is to extend the employment agreement through June thirty-two, 2024. That's a three-year extension. It still provides for termination or extension by the mutual, by the council. Second, the base salary of Mr. Adams will be increased to $245,863 effective July one, 2019, and this annual base salary would continue throughout the remaining five years of the agreement. Third, there will be a cost of living increase that Mr. Adams would be entitled to, beginning on July one, 2020. That cost of living increase would be the average cost of living consumer, the average consumer price index for the previous two years, or a maximum of 3%. So if the average of the cost of living increase for the previous two years was 2%, that's what the cost of living increase would be. If the cost of living average for the previous two years was four, the maximum would be three. Fourth, the city would contribute to an approved Internal Revenue Code 457B deferred compensation count on behalf of Mr. Adams. The contribution would be increased from $18,000 per year to $19,000 per year on July one, 2019, or the maximum allowed by the Internal Revenue Code. And on, beginning July one, 2022, and 2023, that would increase to $25,000 per year, or the maximum allowed by the Internal Revenue Code. Additionally, the city would contribute $10,000 per year to the, for the term of the employment agreement to an Internal Revenue Code Section 401A Profit Sharing Plan on behalf of Mr. Adams. And finally, the fifth change in his agreement would be to increase the auto allowance from $500 to $600 a month, beginning July one, 2019. If you have any questions, I'll be pleased to respond to them.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Any questions to the city attorney? Okay, no questions. Do we have any requests to speak? We move to council discussions. Anybody want to discuss anything?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Marianne Edwards. Seconded by Councilmember Ron, before we take the vote. I'll tell you, as we were going through this whole process, I don't think there was any hesitation as to Mr. Adams' worth to the City of Temecula. I don't think anybody here doubts that, but I think it's worthy of saying publicly, especially with your management staff, that the city council respects you, thinks highly of you, and is very proud of the work that you've done for the City of Temecula, and we encourage you to continue your leadership. Please cast your votes. That passes five-zero. That passes 5-0. Councilmember Swank?
Yeah, I just want to say, let's just keep winning championships, right? Let's just keep doing that.
That's right. Okay. Commission reports. Let's go with Mr. Sullivan. Oh, God bless you. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I really am kidding. Gary Watts, go for it, planning commission.
Let me see my notes here.
Yeah.
Just briefly, our last meeting last week, we approved a resolution that go to you, the council, defining short-term rentals in the town, in the, in the city, and add short-term rentals to the use regulation table in the Temecula Municipal Code.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Beautiful, and we're expecting that to come up, up to us. Mr. Levine, I continually wonder how you get your head that shiny. I just need to know, okay? No, I'm jealous.
I completely just said that.
I'm just completely jealous, okay? What, what was that?
Thank you.
Well, yeah.
It's that car nubu wax.
I just, I got to know the secret. Anyway, Mr. Levine, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Quick note, in the audience tonight, we had Boy Scout Troop 148, we had the Badgers and Huskies Patrol. They were working on a requirement for the Communications Merit Badge, which involved coming to a public meeting. So I wanted to point that out. Also, very interested to hear Mayor Protem's report on the trip to Japan. That was great. We were also treated to that last night by Tracy Frick, who gave us a different perspective. So that is my report tonight. Hard to follow Director Hawkins and that voluminous report, but lots of great stuff being done by Community Services.
Sounds good, and absolutely, and I think by the next council meeting, give us a full report on, on activities for the Fourth of July, because it's coming up.
Yes, it is.
So, we're making our plans. Okay, let's see here. Public safety report. We got anything, Mr. Cassidy?
Just real quickly, for the month of May, the Fire Department responded to 777 calls, and we just want to remind all the citizens that you need to look before you lock, or, excuse me, Caitlin's law, make sure that your kids are not in your vehicle. It's an unfortunate thing, especially with the heat wave going on, so, in a report.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
I think you heard enough from me tonight, but I did want to say thank you to all, all five of you for your confidence in me. I'm looking forward to continuing to lead with this team in place, and I'm very excited for the future, so my thanks to you. And, and lastly, real quick, just a quick shout-out to the city, Charles Walker, Temecula Valley Unified School District, Mount San Jacinto College, in putting together the first of its kind of vocational programs around culinary. And we just graduated the first cohort a couple weeks ago, and it was an amazing success as we venture into some of these partnerships with folks like the school district and the community college. I think there's going to be more of that, but just, just really proud of the effort that the city put forward on that project as well.
You know, Mr. City Manager, at your discretion and at a time appropriate, maybe you have Mr. Walker come on in. He, he hides in the shadows and does such a fantastic job and just sort of doesn't really ask any praise for it, so maybe you bring him in here, and again, at your discretion, and have him tell us what he's up to, because he always keeps coming up with this stuff, okay? All right. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had a closed session tonight. There are no reportable actions. The mayor did not participate for the reasons I discussed earlier in the meeting.
Beautiful. Well, now comes the time for adjournment. We made it three minutes before 10:00. I'll entertain that motion. Okay, that was Ms. Edwards?
Second.
Mr. Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.